Gold Beach, nature's wild side. Have a board meeting at the Oregon coast. Gold Beach. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com.
Well, before we get going, I'd like to welcome everybody. Glad you're all here. The first part is going to be urban renewal. And our chairperson for that lady is Councilor Kaufman. So we'll start with that, and I'm going to turn it on over to her. And we've scheduled about a half hour for it. So anyway, that will be what we're going to start with. And then at 6:30, we'll go into our regular agenda and begin the meeting anew. But before we get going with that a little bit, I wanted to say something. As long as we've got everybody here, or most people here at this time. Couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, my wife pulled a little trick on me to get me down to City Hall. And when we got here, it was raining, and she said we were going to race. And instead, we parked at, well, this end. And I'm thinking, for crying out loud, you know? After 40, almost 42 years, you'd think, maybe we could park a little bit closer to the grocery store. But I noticed as we went by, there were a bunch of people out here, and I thought, what's going on? You know, because normally, I know what's going on, but everybody's here. And so she parks, and then she says, well, I recognize a couple of cars. And so we got out, and we started going on up. And lo and behold, it was a surprise for me. The bench out in front of City Hall has a goldfish on it. And I don't mean a goldfish. I mean, it's a bronze fish. It's a lot bigger than a goldfish. But at any rate, it has on it an honor of Mayor Carl Popoff. And that is something that I did not expect at all. Many of you know, I enjoy thoroughly being able to give awards and what have you to people that have contributed to the welfare and just the betterment of this community. It's always something that I'd like to do, but it's not anything that I've ever expected for myself. I wanted to, and this is interesting, because it was Councilor Kaufman. And I didn't realize the full extent of that. But it was her idea. And she independently raised $1,200 to get that little plaque on that bench. And I didn't realize it cost $1,200. Now, Lori, you're scalping people. But nevertheless, I didn't think that there were that many people in the city that actually liked me. I don't know where they all came from, but if any of you out there contributed to it and what have you, I sincerely want to thank you. That truly touched me for the first time in one long time. I did not know what to say. And yeah, I was speechless. I really was. And it was something that I just consider a great, great honor, and I want to thank you, Councilor. I want to thank Councilors that were here. I'm assuming that Councilor Brennan probably didn't chip in anything. But he did bring me an empty beer cup, which I'll always treasure. At any rate, I just wanted to thank everybody and just say how much I truly, truly feel honored by that. So with that in mind, we are now a couple of minutes after the urban renewal meeting. So if everyone would please stand. My pleasure to be seated in the glass of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Senator, who position you?
Larry Brown. Anthony Ciono, physician drinks.
Becky Campbell, physician four.
Jamie Kaufman, physician five.
Carl Popoff, mayor, and our city administrator, Jody Fritz, present as well. So, Madam Chairman, if you're in your valley wood right now.
All right. So we, Administrator Fritz and I met with Jordan and I, the White, because they are trying to build a project that includes housing. And they happen to be in their urban renewal district and commercial financing and stuff that is commercial property. So we're putting resident two units only. It causes all kinds of issues with financing. So I suggested to them to bring us a proposal. Maybe we could loan them the money. Urban renewal doesn't have any money right now, but the city trusts us, so it's possible we could borrow money from the city, loan it to the Whites, and make it all happen. And we can get some early success in our plan. And I believe you all have seen the Whites' proposal. And they're basically wanting a 12-year loan at 4% interest only payments for the first year. So I believe the only thing the urban renewal agency would be out is what it costs to service that loan and whatever it costs us to do the agreements. So pretty inexpensive for the urban renewal agency overall to get...
Seven.
Seven units built. So I will open it up for discussion. Yes?
The Whites are here if anyone has any questions.
Yeah. All right.
Where would the money come from within the city? It's not like we have money laying around.
It would be like the Grisley Mountain and the payoff of the Highway 101 loan. The super reserve has about $1.5 million in reserve, which is reserved money for repairs, so it's not free money. But right now, we get about 0.16% interest per month on that money, where if we were to loan it out, we could get, as Councilor Kaufman said, the 4%, which would be certainly more than... We've loaned money to ourselves for other things, so that we didn't have to borrow it or so that we would make loan money on interest. And one of the things that you just said, as far as like the fees and stuff, that could probably be rolled into the package as well. Councilor Kaufman did have a question to me earlier by email about executive session. And the attorney was saying that if you guys talk about this and decide that this is something that you want to move forward, you can delegate the authority to the chair and/or staff to deal with the technical portions of it, so you wouldn't necessarily have to have an executive session. But anyway, the money would come from reserved money that we're not presently making much interest on right now.
Thank you. Mayor Popoff.
Yeah. Has anybody had an opportunity to see the home that they have already built? And have you all had a chance to see that?
Just from the outside. Just from the outside.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a very nice project.
It is a very, very nice project. And from what I understand, the only thing left prior to moving in is electrical.
Yeah, we're just finished electrical, ready for insulation sheet rock, and then just finishing the inside.
Thanks, Jordan. Yeah, it's a nice place. It's a nice place. It's definitely something that the city, as far as I'm concerned, could easily be interested in, particularly with the idea of six more on the way.
Councilor Brennan?
My only question, I thought this was going for the bigger part of the next project. So this loan would just do the initial seven units?
Yes. This seven and additional to the one that's there. So we totally eight down below.
One unit with interest.
Right. Those are going to be rentals?
This seven would be rentals? Yes.
I think it's a great opportunity to... I mean, it's what urban renewal's for. I'll wait until that fires, and then I'll finish. Let's be a real fire call. Can I just call it?
I haven't seen this from a real fire call, but it's on.
Yeah, never. Never just coming in.
Maybe they're testing it.
Maybe they're out somewhere. So anyway, I think that's a great idea. I would just like to make sure that somewhere along, and I think the reason that your project is being done is because of the issue or the fact that so many vacation rentals have taken so many houses off the market and so on. You know, as long as there could be something to say that they could never be used for vacation rentals.
What I was thinking is in the loan agreement, it would say they have to maintain them as long-term rentals for the life of the loan. I don't want them in like a deed restriction, because maybe the market completely changes and we don't have the availability, not alone to lose money. I think, and because it is a commercial property, flexibility doesn't... But that was not a problem.
It probably wouldn't be there. It might be a situation where somebody rents it and then it's... You know what I mean?
I hope he catches those.
Yeah. We don't want that to happen. Anyway, I think, yeah, it is a win there, so.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great opportunity. We didn't have to really construct this plan ourselves. It was waiting for funding. So I think it looks like a pretty safe investment.
And one of the things that the meetings that you and Councilor Kaufman have been attending with the housing, this kind of came up out of that, correct? So that was another good way of networking and solving a problem regionally, so.
That would be wonderful. It'd be exciting.
I think it's a great idea. I like the idea, at least for the length of the loan, to limit it to just at least long-term rentals, not vacation rentals, but I think it's a fantastic idea.
Sounds like everybody's in favor, so if that's okay with you guys, I'll make a motion.
I was writing notes to Councilor Brennan.
That's from Christie.
Just a suggestion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we move forward with a loan of $350,000 at 4% interest on a 12-year note, interest only the first year, secured by the property at 29940 Harbor Way. And $150,000, we'll set this up like a line of credit with $150,000. Might go a little slow. $150,000 installment as soon as possible with another installment. I'm going to say upon request, because we don't know if they're going to go. Project to be completed in three years. If not, approved in three years, to communicate with the agency and to delegate the city administrator to negotiate the terms. I'm going to be prompt to send Councilor Kaufman to review that as well. Signature authority to signature of acceptance. Did I cover everything?
Do you want to talk about the loan?
Oh, yeah, and no long-term rentals for the method loan.
Okay, and then, as Councilor Ciono said, that subject to the council loaning the money to the urban renewal agency. Actually, maybe that should be two separate motions. One will be the loan to the urban renewal agency. Okay, sorry. Okay, and then no short-term rentals during the term of the loan. Short-term meaning vacation rentals?
Yes.
Do you want to read that back so somebody can see it from this place?
Okay, the motion was for a loan of $350,000 at 4% interest for 12 years, interest only for the first year. The loan will be secured by the property located on Harbor Way. The initial payment will be $150,000, which will be as a line of credit. The rest will be upon request. The project is to be completed within three years for an extension request approved. Signature authority to the city administrator, subject to approval by the urban renewal chair, and no short-term slash vacation rentals during the term of the loan.
Second.
I'll make a grab.
All right. I have a question. I don't know who started. You want to start, son?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I'll make a second motion that we ask the city of Gold Beach to loan the urban renewal agency $350,000 at 3.5% interest for 12 years.
I'll second that motion.
So the reason I said 3.5% is that half percent will cover any costs of their urban renewal agency. Probably will have an administrative. Okay. Off the question.
Aye.
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 Administrator Fritz, did we cover everything we need to move forward?
I believe so. So I will contact our legal counsel. I already talked to them a little bit today, but I'll contact them tomorrow and figure out what paperwork we need to get together, and we'll get something going this week.
Thank you, guys.
The loan, can, may I respectfully ask Mr. Mayor if we could add an agenda item to discuss the loan that we just talked about onto the city council agenda?
Yes, ma'am. No, there shouldn't be any problems with that. Where do you want to put it?
I think we should give a motion when that name starts, right?
I'll push it on what?
To add it to the...
I think so.
I think we need a motion that all we need is my approval.
Okay, so probably under the, probably under resolutions and ordinances, and I could come up with a resolution language subject to review by the mayor. Does that sound okay? And then that way, we don't have to wait another month till the next meeting. Okay?
Yeah, just for the one you have.
Okay. I just wanted to, a couple of things that we talked about, Administrator Fritz is talking to CCD about administering that loan, as Angelina found out. And I think they also have some loan documents and stuff that we might be able to use. So she's already above the fold. And part of the reason I started thinking this might work is I asked around if any violations with the development have happened, and he's been a above-the-board developer trying to hear everything to better the community. So I personally thought like we didn't have a lot of risk in this particular one. Plus, he's offering us the first trustee, so that's, first win on any property is a great deal. So we're getting an early win. There's nothing, was it on your agenda?
Councilor Kaufman?
Yes?
Did the Whites, did you guys want to add anything?
That's all perfect.
Okay.
So I think the next thing is, maybe the next meeting we have, we should talk about whether or not we want to live in and not have any advisory members, because we haven't had any. We asked the districts if they would be interested, and nobody's come forward. We've asked the public, and nobody's come forward, so maybe we just...
I mean, on the civilian end of the... Well, I'm going to be announcing that tonight as well, and at least pleading that we have four openings, and we still have four openings.
Councilor Mathen?
So I promoted that on social media today, based on what I pulled from the packet, and I've gotten some good engagement, so we can maybe give it until the next meeting and see what that produces.
I would look at the districts, even if they didn't live in town, you can amend the open for the new rentals. They're affected by tax or criminal violence.
So why don't I give it to the districts specifically?
Yeah, we sent away all of them. Mayor Popoff?
No, ma'am. I was about to just make a quick plea concerning urban renewal and our members at large, which we have four openings for. And quite frankly, we don't have anybody filling them at all now. I would just like to state that if you have, if you would like to be a part of this process, because this is an important process, it truly is, if you would like to have a say-so in what is taking place within the city concerning urban growth, all right, urban renewal, then I would ask you, please, please, to submit your name. And also, it doesn't take that much time. I think, Madam Chairman, we're looking, as far as the meetings are concerned...
Probably about four or five this year.
Yeah, about four or five meetings, and that's about it. But your input would be greatly appreciated, and you would have an opportunity to honestly make a difference within the city, as how we're doing things as well, too. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in there, and so thank you for your patience.
Okay, and I think I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I think, Ms. Bennet, stand.
I would just like to thank the council for being so proactive and progressive and really moving forward with helping for this town. It's a big move, it's exciting. I wanted to stand and clap, so thank you. This is great.
Thank you, ma'am.
I want to thank the Whites for moving in town.
He's living in a fifth wheel the last year and a half. He's a sergeant with the sheriff's department, but there's been no place for him to be. And for them to take the initiative like this and to do this type of thing, to me, is just absolutely magnificent. And so I want to thank you personally, both of you, for doing what you're doing, for taking the initiative on this, and actually providing places that are badly needed for others.
We're thrilled.
You know, so thank you very, very much. All right, are we through? Are we adjourned on this one?
Wait for a motion to adjourn unless somebody else wants to.
I would make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Question?
Aye.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned. We will begin our regularly scheduled meeting within the next few minutes. So if you want to get up and move around a little bit, and just relax, or whatever you want to do, please feel free to do it.
Eight minutes is spared.
All right, we do have special orders of business, and that will be the commencement of a presentation from ODOT on Highway 101 reconfiguration consideration. And from what I understand, it would be somewhat akin to what has already taken place in Fort Orford and Reed's Ford that I'm seeing. But at any rate, where is our representative at? There you are. Oh, way back there.
Sneaky.
And a name and just, well, actually, just a name for the...
All right, so Darren Neval, District 7 Manager with ODOT.
I'm Jenna Morin. I'm the Region 3 traffic transportation liaison for...
Aaron Brooks, Region 3 Traffic Manager. So thank you for having us. So we wanted to do a little presentation on road configuration considerations for, through Gold Beach. And so we're not here to say one way or the other, it's just really a decision that you guys are going to make at some point. We'll share our thoughts and our opinions a little bit and give you some information from the studies and stuff that we've done. But it's really, we would not do that without your approval. And so if you could click Jody to the first slide, I'll do that, and then I'm going to hand it off to the experts around this a little more than I am. But we were invited by Gold Beach Main Street about, I think, a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago. And one of the big conversations was three-lane. Can we do that in Gold Beach? And so talking with Jody and stuff, she said, well, is it even feasible? Definitely, Gold Beach is a little different than Fort Orford, and so we said, we own us, let us do some studying. So we'll talk about what we learned as we did some stuff. So we'll talk about the traffic analysis that we did. We'll talk about some benefits and trade-offs of road configurations. There is, how I see it, is it's trade-offs. Really, you guys need to decide, you know, what you want in your community. There's good and bad to making changes, and so they'll talk about those today. We'll talk about some experiences from other jurisdictions, and then considerations for implementation. We have some ideas, we've had some experience doing that with other communities, and we can talk about how we've done that and maybe some ideas for you guys if you want to move forward. We're not looking for an answer today. I think there probably needs to be further conversations, but this is just a start of a conversation, is how we see it. Unless you guys are absolutely no after this conversation, that would be it. We can walk away and be done with that. But if you want further conversations, we'd be happy to do that down the road. Any questions for me before I hand it off to this group?
Go on. Any questions, Darren?
Okay. Thank you.
And then you just cue me when you want me to change slides. And the council has copies of the slides.
Okay, perfect. This first slide is basically just for your information about the characteristics of Gold Beach, of your traffic volume, AAT, that's hourly daily traffic, 9,000 vehicles. It, because it's on the coast, pretty big fluctuations seasonally, summer versus winter. We're projecting fairly low growth over the next 20 years. It's consistent with what we've seen over the last 20 years. And both these numbers, this is just a snapshot time, so we can count it next year, it'd be 9,200 or, but pretty stable. About 19% heavy vehicles, your trucks, motorhomes. The roadway width, this is mostly in the four-lane section. lane section. Obviously, to go further to the north, it widens outwards rehab in the past. Crashes, this'll kind of come into play later on when we go into some of the benefits. We've had over the last 10 years, two severe injuries, eight moderate injuries, 13 minor injuries, and 38 property damage. And these are recorded crashes. We realize there's many crashes that don't get actually recorded.
Okay, I have a question.
Yep.
On that, the crashes, how does that work out with like other similar communities?
It's pretty consistent with other ones.
Plus relatively normal?
Relatively normal, yes. I would, by knowing means, is this like a crazy safety problem you have going on here?
Do you have any statistics so far? I know that Fort Orford has only had that traffic configuration for probably the last two years or something like that. As far as safety, has it made the road any safer at all?
Uh, we have our safety data. We barely have, maybe six months of, after they've done their reconfiguration there. So we don't have any good.
So you don't have anything at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And Fort Orford actually had much fewer crashes than even here. So it's lower volume.
Darren, we did, we did do a, a speed check before and after. And I guess we did notice the speed got slower, a little bit slower. But it really reduced those high peaks. So you had those high ones coming through. It really reduced that. It reduced it overall by about one or two miles an hour. It really reduced the high peaks when we looked at the data.
Yeah, thank you, Darren. That's basically what I was trying to get to is if it would lower the speeds. But obviously, we have a little bit of a problem coming in and going on out, particularly with the four lanes and whatnot. And my main concern, quite frankly, is the safety of the citizens within the city. So, at any rate, that's the reason for the question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, so first of all, road reconfiguration. The 60s, 70s, 80s, it was pretty, pretty common to every town you went through. We widened out, we put four lanes through there. That's just what went out. Into the 90s, after 2000, we kind of looked back and went, wait a minute, four lanes, is it something we should be doing? There's lots of problems with it, turning movements, crashes, speeding. So nowadays, we would never build a roadway anywhere if we were to divide one into a four lane section. We go from a two lane to a three lane and then build it out to a five lane. So road reconfiguration, we're kind of looking, okay, we have something we probably wouldn't build now. Let's build what we, or let's reconfigure it to what we, what fits, sort of thing. So our initial review of our, the average annual daily traffic suggested a road diet to a three lane section, or road reconfiguration to a three lane section is feasible. We have in the region close to 20,000 ADT, so we're well within that realm. Yeah, that's fine. So we did, I think, six intersections. We took counts in 2018. And we did Moore Street, Copley, Fourth, Sixth, Eleventh. And then later, at the city's request, we added Third as well because of some queueing problems going on.
Do you, do you have results from the Third Street? You're gonna get some?
Yep.
Awesome.
So, the, credit results. So, this is the table, probably no one can see except for you, the top slides. Yeah. So when we, when we do analysis, we look at basically two things. For, from ODOT standard, we look at volume to capacity. So what's your volume out there, what's the capacity that that either three lane, four, or five lane can handle? Lots of jurisdictions do level of service. And that's a alphabetic representation of delay. So on here, you have level of service. I, we put the delay as well, just so you can kind of correlate it to what you're seeing. And then the volume to capacity. Whether we're at a three lane, four lane, five lane, our volume to capacity, we're not even close to having volume to capacity problems or approaching the standards. The level of service, typically, you want to stay, you don't want to go much more than level service C or D. Once you go higher, it, it goes A through F. You go C and D, that's your comfort range. You get to the E and F and people start making stupid decisions.
Could you explain the, I mean, you're giving us a letter, but I don't know exactly what they mean.
So A, I wish I had the exact thresholds of what the delay is. I think A is less than like 10 seconds of delay. So it's, it's in seconds of delay. So here we have a B that was 13.8 seconds of delay. And in delay, I'm talking about time you wait until you can find a gap and go out into traffic.
So you're saying the word B and C or something like that?
Right now, you have one intersection, Third Street, that's a level of service peak. So that's getting right up there on the cusp of, yeah, much more. And it's gonna feel unsafe and people might make bad decisions. So specifically at Third Street, which that turned out to be our worst, worst one. If you go to a three lane configuration.
What is a three lane?
Three lane. So, just start at that. A three lane, a four lane, we have two through lanes in each direction. A three lane, we would have a through lane in each direction and then a center lane that's for turning. And, and we can stripe that in two different ways. You can stripe it at each intersection as a dedicated left, or you can leave the permissive turning. So you can make two stages left out and you can turn into driveways and accesses near the intersections.
Sure. It's about, it's about the same thing that they have in, in Fort Orford as you're going through there, Kathy. Yeah. And that one, if I'm not mistaken, you can either make a left, right, that type of term for, it's just a basic center access.
It's a center act, yeah. So you can, and when I say two stage, so on our three lane part over there, there's a couple, all the ones that aren't signalized, there's some parentheses in there next to it. So you'll see two different values. The first one is if we stripe it so you can make it two stages left out. So you can leave the street, turn left, wait in the center, and then go into the respective three lane. Then one in the parentheses is if we stripe it with a dedicated lane into the opposing direction. You can't turn left out into there because it's dedicated for those cars to go the other way. So those, the delays are higher. And what this analysis on this is, we definitely wouldn't want to stripe it that way at Third Street. We'd want to stripe it as the permissive center. And it's mostly coming out of a case that was the, kind of the, the worst case movement is that left out of the case.
When you do that and you don't dedicate it, are there more accidents that happen or not?
Not necessarily. In this, we, what we look at is how many cars are doing the opposing movement. And it, it kind of balances itself out in the analysis. If there's a bunch of cars doing the opposing movement, it scores really high. It's really high delay.
Real quickly, all the questions directed to the chair. What I'm going to do is, because we try our level best to make sure that everything is run according to oil, so to speak. We want good meetings where they don't get out of control or anything along those lines. So what I will do here at this time, if you have a question, or ask any of our ODOT representatives, then just raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you, okay? That'll be the easiest way I know how. And everybody will get an opportunity to ask their questions. I think, Lori, you had your hand up, did you not?
I already have.
Go ahead.
So the center lane, if you were to pull out of a case, how, how is the crosswalk that's there affected? Which has, that is further, I mean, obviously it's there and it's good to have the lighting, but it also further complicates, you know, what you're looking at when you're pulling out there.
Yeah. So at Third Street, the McKay's left, which is the highest one, the crosswalk's on the opposite. So I tell you, wouldn't be conflicting with that crosswalk because it's on the south lane. This, the Third Street left out, you'd have to, you'd be going into that crosswalk thing.
So does McKay's have a specific, I mean, it's in and out on both sides?
It's in and out both. So I'm, I'm talking about, the McKay's access that I'm talking about here is basically straight across. It's kind of offset from there. But the northerly McKay's driveway. And, and there's, we did a separate, I guess now's a good time for it. We did a separate analysis specifically for Third Street. And we looked at if a signal is warranted and the volumes aren't anywhere close to a signal. So with that, the, where the options are kind of access management, restricting turn movements in and out, those type of things, you can make a difference and make it a little better, specifically at the Third Street with, with the proximity. It's still, it's gonna be a messy, messy situation pretty much no matter what you do. With that being said, Third Street, if we go to a three lane section and have that center turn lane, it actually makes the operation better than the four lane today. So those are, are, all of our intersections that we analyzed operate with, as long as you do that, the right turn lane configuration, strapping, operate well below standards, acceptable level of service delay. As for the entire corridor, if you go from a four, five lane down to the three, we expect about a 10 second increase in travel time from one end down all the way to the other. And, and either, in either case, we measure that too with level of service. And we're level service A in either case here. So there's not, from a delay standpoint, there's, is not even close to delay problems today or regardless on the other streets, we're looking at less than a five second increase on any side street time coming on to out.
Now, just taking into consideration summer volumes too.
This, oh, so, go back, I probably missed, missed that point. So we took all these volumes in July. So we're, we purposely wanted to look at the worst, worst case and go on and be adjusting volumes or guessing at.
When in July? Being a tourist gal myself in the industry, when in July was that?
That is a good question. I believe it was the second week.
Because, you know, tourism is hitting later. And so August is the big month.
Yeah. And our, on our, we have traffic recorders. Unfortunately, we don't have one in Rider and Gold Beach. We have one south of Brookings and south of Fort Orford. And we hit July and August. They're both are bad for our, those are our peak months. That's the, that's the average for a whole between the two months.
They're reconfiguring the parking lot to access in and out at the case. So it's basically straight on the Third Street. Would that help anything there?
Not a lot. So the way we analyzed it is we analyzed that as if it was a four-way intersection. The reconfiguration of their accesses would be restricting, I want to say, restricting the left out at Third and making that occur at the southerly one, which isn't really, it's kind of abandoned. I don't think it really gained you all that much. Alright. So that kind of sums up the analysis portion. And then now we'll go on to kind of our, our benefits and then some of the trade-offs. So I'm doing the driving vehicular benefits. The biggest one is it improves safety and reduces conflicts. From a four lane section to a three lane section, we, we expect about a 29% reduction in crashes. And as I said earlier, we don't have, I would say, not a bad, we don't have a crash problem here. There, there are crashes. There's a way to reduce them, but it's not some crazy safety issue. That's from a four lane to a three lane. Much of the town at the signals on the north end has five lanes. It's closer to about a 10% reduction for those five lane. The reason you're reducing crashes is you're reducing conflict points. So, sa- safety is all to do with how many conflict points you're doing. You're not crossing two lanes of traffic to go out. You don't have vehicles, vehicle occlusion of a semi and a car racing behind it, crossing in front of you. You have a separate turn lane. So on your, your four lane parts, you're no longer, when you drive through Brookings, you know how bad it is. You never go in that, in the fast lanes of, say, Brookings because at Center Street, you're gonna get stopped. We're not quite to that level here. But at some point, traffic volumes decrease. That, your center through lanes, people are stopping to make left turns and, you know, rear-ending crashes, that type of thing. Big one, as Darren alluded to earlier, is you reduce the speed differentials on your, your through traffic. You reduce the passing, passing should never be occurring in your towns. That's for outside of towns, climbing lanes, that type of thing. You don't want people making up time, racing through your town, crosswalks, just people pulling out in general. We run it through a, a simulation tool. Our, our guess is your speeds will drop by about one mile per hour. So that's your total average speeds. And like we saw in Fort Orford, we take those high, high speeds, you drop those down as you're following other vehicles, you know, a lot of do those. That's, with that, that's not agenda, I'm trying to talk about.
Other things, sir?
So.
I'd be a smart aleck. Mr. Mayor, there's your question.
Yes, ma'am.
There's your question in the back, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. Before you go, two questions for you. One, do you have an idea of, you said it's 9,000 cars per day. You took your studies in July. Do you have any estimate as to what usage is in January?
It's typically around 30% swing, up, up and down. I would say, and it's pure guess, around 6,000 vehicles per day.
Okay. Second question. Any accidents, we've had 60 accidents in 10 years. Have the ones you listed, are they all vehicle, vehicle? Or do you have the little pedestrian injuries?
I can't answer that. I don't really know.
Okay, thank you.
We have the data.
I have the data.
They just don't have with us.
Yeah, I know, with me, yeah.
By the way, Counsel Campbell, thanks for ordering me to that. I just missed Counselor Coffman.
I have a question you can't answer either. Maybe you could research it later if we do a follow-up. Is, we put in with your assistance that crosswalk, different areas in Third Street?
Yep.
And that's where some of our serious accidents had happened. Since that's gone in, what's the difference between since then and before then?
That would be something I'd have to.
I, I think it's an important statistic because that was expensive.
Yeah.
But I think it worked. Because I don't think we've had an incident since then.
Are, are you talking about pedestrian incidents?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't recall any pedestrian incidents. But without the data from you, I don't want to.
It's much safer than, it really is with that light. Yes.
I know you don't have this one either. Thank you in the future. Is there like state statistics on the amount of accidents that happen with pedestrians when you do have those double lanes or someone's stopped and a child's running across and here comes another car, does he see it?
Yes. And Jenna will talk to that a little bit.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and this might be addressed later as to where you would start this, you know, traffic calming and such and everything. But from the south end of town to Sixth Street, there's no bypass streets or anything. You know, for things like, I was curious as to how that works into.
My, my recognition would be if you're gonna go to a three lane section, you do it through the entire, prior to the five, existing five lane and the four lane. With, with the, the width of the roadway, as you get, you basically have to go all the way almost to that northern section or to the signal to get, you, you'd have too short of a passing distance after that. And you wouldn't want them just racing in, in that short little section.
What? Somebody's wondering?
No.
Go ahead.
Does, does this mean there's a bike lane and a parking lane also or no?
There, that would be some discussion for later. The, the roadway width doesn't, doesn't match well to have. The roadway width doesn't match well to have parking on both sides, and bike lanes, and vehicular lanes in the turn lane. But there is enough room that parking could be on one side of the road or the other.
Are there any further questions from the audience from Mr. Brooks before you...
He'll be back too, just so you know. We're not, he'll be back. He's going to, I'm just going to cover it for a spot here. And then you can ask him all the hard questions.
One thing, Delightos. You're ahead.
More of an observation or question is, because I've been in a situation twice now. Coming through town, you're in the left lane, person's coming off and across, I stopped up by the bistro, and I'm stopped, I look in my rearview mirror, and here comes a guy from Canada, and he's doing about 45, sees me stopped, rather than go, oh, maybe I should stop, he just whips over, had I not laid on the horn, because the woman was at my headlight on this side when I laid on the horn, and she stopped to look at me, and what was I doing? This car missed her probably by less than 12 inches zoom through town.
I have seen that more than once. In fact, it's happened to me a couple of different times.
It's happened down by 76.
And that is why, I'll be very honest with everybody, I despise crosswalks. More people get hit in crosswalks because for some reason or other, they think those white lines are magical and prevent them from being hit by, I'll give you, I jaywalk. And that way I know I'm being safe. And I know it's in the back there. You know the rest of the area for jaywalking.
Now you might.
One thing on design, I was just going to say, there's lots of different little nuances that you could do with design. We didn't really want to get into all those options until you guys say, yeah, we want to have further conversations. Then we could bring options or different things around that. So just recognize that. If you want to move forward any farther, we could have further discussion, we could come and bring some options to you.
All right, thank you, Darren. All right.
So again, I'm Jenna Marman, I'm the active transportation person, so I'm going to talk about specifically and answer actually some of those questions. But as a side note, as I rolled into town tonight, I went to turn left into my hotel and nearly got rear-ended because the person behind me was looking down instead of looking up. And so there are definite benefits, and I did experience one of them coming into town tonight in my car. So from a pedestrian standpoint, at the end of the day, the thing with people walking is, just like you said, I looked at, you pointed out the speed of that vehicle, slower speeds equals a safer environment, right? So if somebody's in a hurry and they're in this situation where there's two lanes, it feels like a raceway, they're more likely to go fast. So if we can slow the speeds down and get that prudent driver to make the good decision and stop for pedestrians, that's really helpful and much safer. And not just safer from a crash prevention standpoint, or addressing the current crashes, but preventing those crashes in the future. Because sometimes it is only 12 inches, right, that really saves somebody. So slower speeds equals a safer environment for pedestrians. If you're hit by a car going 40 miles an hour, you have like a 45% chance of survival. If you're hit by a car going 20, you have a 93% chance. So it's almost like flipping it. And a person is 70% more likely to be killed if struck by a vehicle traveling 30 than 25. So the numbers are pretty significant, the differences. And then the other thing is, older adults are more vulnerable. And I think, as we know, our communities are aging, there's a lot more older people, and we need to think about those numbers as older adults, and then the percentages are actually, there's like no chance that they survive being hit at 40 miles an hour if you're 70. So, big difference. And if people are going slower, and if they're just looking at one lane, navigating one lane, you're less likely to get hit in the first place. So people driving slower have a bigger field of vision, right? Their cone of vision is bigger, and they also have a much shorter crossing, or shorter stopping distance. So you hit the brakes, you're stopped much faster than if you're going too fast. At crossings specifically, I think, you know, you're looking to serve, sure, able-bodied folks might jaywalk or run across all four lanes at once, but you really want to look to serve the older and younger people, especially since you have destinations on both sides 101 through the community. So it would be great to serve both the older and the younger community members by having a more permeable, a more easy way to cross the street. It's a shorter crossing, and you can also incorporate the safety refuges, like in the picture on the upper right. Sorry for those in the audience if you can't see it, but basically in that third, that middle lane, that two-way left turn lane, you can put an island. And so you just cross one lane, and then you can pause, and then you can look, and the traffic's only coming from one direction. So you just have to navigate that one lane instead of two, or in some cases, four, in some environments. And you can also, if there is parking, that's incorporated in the cross-section, which it could be, you can also incorporate curb extensions or bump outs, and that also reduces the crossing distance for pedestrians. And then lastly, from a pedestrian standpoint, right now when you walk down the street in town, if you put your elbow out too far, you might end up actually catching a rearview mirror because there's not that buffer, whereas with a three-lane section, you would have a buffer between the edge of the curb and live traffic. So that can make it a lot more comfortable to walk, especially in some of the areas where the sidewalks are a bit narrow. And then from a bike standpoint, reconfiguring those lanes can help you, can give you the opportunity to strike bike lanes. Again, you might not decide to do that, you might want to do parking instead of bike lanes, but I will say that the coast bike route plan that's underway right now, we've identified the top 30 critical needs in the entire coast between Astoria and the California border, and downtown Gold Beach actually came up as one of the critical needs because there is no current bike facility. So it has bubbled to the top as one of the critical needs in that 380-mile coast bike route study. Go ahead and switch it, thanks for your... And then the other community, the other benefit that I'm going to address is the community and economic development benefits. So business access and exposure improves, people driving slower and people driving in their own lane and not having other cars next to them have a better line of sight to all the adjacent businesses. Entering and exiting those businesses is a little bit easier, again for the reasons that Aaron mentioned with the two-way left turn lane. Again, Aaron talked about the passing within the community in downtown, and storefronts and signs are more easily seen. So one of the main drivers is often, for road reconfigurations, is often community development. I mean, there's, I actually was at a conference once in Greenville, North Carolina, I believe, it might have been South Carolina, oops. And two lines from that, first of all, they had one of the first road reconfigurations in the country, and it was in like 1979. And the mayor of that town said, "Level of service F," which Aaron talked about level of service, so you know what that means now, traffic going slower, "equals economic development A." So I love that line and have used it often ever since. You can really all create more of a, so it depends on what the context is that you want to create, right? So you're looking at your town, what do you want your town to feel like? What do you want the context of your town to feel like? The other line that I've heard is the drive through town versus the drive to town. And I think the other thing, and again, experienced by me coming into town, I think about some of the less confident drivers in the world, maybe my parents and also my 16-year-old stepson who's now driving. I think that they are both really nervous about turning left or stopping in a situation like this. So this really helps those kinds of nervous drivers feel more comfortable making that stop. So that economic development driver can be a real reason that communities choose to look at these. And Aaron's going to talk about the trade-offs.
All right. So our number one trade-off, and pretty much every topic that I'll talk about is trade-off, comes back to delay. So you have delay entering the highway, you have additional delay from one end of town to the other. Then you have, with that, you'd increase time spent following other cars. Lots of times when we look at where's we put passing lanes, we base it on time spent following vehicles because you get aggravated over time down the highway. So you increase that, took away that. The big one, which is big and not super big for Gold Beach, is your extreme peak holiday trips. Extreme peaks, and I'll call those mostly your holidays.
The most cars.
Yeah. So around here might be fair time, or this is a coastal destination, and it's not on a direct route to and from other coastal destinations, so you don't have as high of, like, Monday after holiday, Sunday after holiday weekend. On some other, on 199, on Highway 42, you get crazy peaks at those times. We don't see those here. But you have to hire peak throughout the entire summer. So I'll say you will see some delay higher than what we've shown, just because we looked at an average day in July, we didn't count it when there's some crazy thing going on. And from a, I guess from a big picture, you don't want to design your roadways to those extreme peak holiday times. So you want to expect some delay, you want it to be comfortable during the average time and accommodate those. So yet, other than delay, there's not a whole lot of other trade-offs you're making.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And the delay you mentioned was going, if we chose to go to the three-lane, would increase travel time from one side of town to the other side of town by one second?
10 seconds.
About an hour.
Yeah, about a one mile per hour drop is what we expect from a computer model, as much as we want to trust that. So that's the, and the speed average, it's close to what we expect, like Port Orford, that's about what we expected there too, and that's about what we saw, but we saw just those extreme highs cut down, which drove down the average a little bit.
Any further? I have a question as well, and it's probably one that you can't answer, but nevertheless, I'd like to throw it out there a little bit. We're mentioning about benefits to local business with a three-lane highway, I'm not sure. I only know of two other places, quite frankly, where they have done this in this area, was at Port Orford and Reedport. Has there been anything? Have you had any feedback? I don't expect you guys to keep numbers on it, but if you had any feedback whatsoever from those two communities as to whether or not their business has grown.
Darren, you heard?
No, no. Port Orford, what we did is, Port Orford, we did a trial, we did a one-year trial and asked for feedback, and the majority of it was feedback, was positive feedback, businesses and everything. Didn't hear anything necessarily that their business grew or anything like that, but just it slowed traffic down, they felt safer, they enjoyed the traffic through town much better. The only complaints we got in Port Orford was just what Aaron talked about, is the side street delay. And when, you know, Aaron's talking about a 10-second, 20-second, at the most, at the worst, delay, you know, some people, it feels a long time. I mean, so it takes a while to get used to that. And so some people did not like that feel of having to wait there another 10 seconds or so. So we got a little bit of feedback of that. And then the other is the following of traffic. That's a different feeling through town. Right now, most of the time it's free-flowing with you, you're hardly right behind somebody unless it's in the middle of summer type, but it's going to feel different to people as they drive through, just because it's one after another. And we've heard that both at Port Orford and Reedport. Reedport has that high peak time, so they have all the campgrounds around them, so Fridays and Mondays are peak, and so they have a lot higher delay during those high peak holiday weekends. And so we've heard a little bit of complaint there. Like Aaron said, we don't see that as an issue here. 95% of the time Reedport loves the three-lane that they've had so far.
Follow-up question on that. And then I'd like to bring our sergeant into it as well too. Have you had any reports whatsoever from those two jurisdictions, their police departments, as whether or not it has been, at least as far as I can see, deemed a little safer since they've implemented that configuration? And then Sergeant, I'd like to have your comments on what you think of something like this as well too.
Sure. So I'll just, nothing really in Reedport yet, it's still fairly new in Reedport, we just got, we're still kind of finishing the project. So not a lot from Reedport yet. Port Orford, yes, we've heard positives, not a lot of, I'd say not a lot of feedback, but just he thinks it's working good.
All right, thanks for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Can I ask Sergeant Miller to, Will and I and Sergeant Miller actually wanted to address this after ODOT was done. Could I ask that we do that together?
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Are you okay with that, Sergeant Miller?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you, ma'am, I did not know that. All right, any further questions?
We still have one.
Go ahead a little bit.
We have a lot more to do.
Can I ask, one quick thing though, just around, emergency services is a concern that comes up when we talk about three-lane. And so just from their concern of getting through there during an emergency and stuff, just remember, we don't, we're not limiting the width or anything in so traffic. So emergency services can get through there. We've got a lot of good reports, Jenna can send some resources on some positive things, and even some emergency services that have had three lanes that we could provide, that they really, overall, we see some good benefits from it. But just, that does come up every time emergency services is a concern.
You can imagine when people are pulling over with four lanes, it can be kind of screwy, but with that dedicated two-way left turn lane in the middle, it gives a clear path and shows oncoming traffic pulls to their side, and you know, the party traffic pulls to their side, so there's a clear path down the two-way left turn lane. It can be really helpful for emergency services.
Thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, this is probably a good segue to our next section, is talking about experiences of other communities. So we've kind of hit Port Orford of the benefits, or saying, the one thing I want to bring to everyone's attention, Port Orford does have, as we all know, lower traffic points. They're at about 50 to 100 vehicles, so not quite half, but significantly lower than here. So there, we don't really expect any delay in Port Orford, almost whatsoever throughout the entire year, whereas here you have, you're getting on that point where you get to have a little. As Darren said, it was a trial that we did there, and then they came back and liked it, and we're going forward with keeping that permanent, and we're doing a project coming in, and we're going to keep that three-lane section through Port Orford.
Where did you have a question?
Yes, Aaron, do you, this is a crazy question, but Joe did kind of comment on this, and that our suite streets may likely be narrower than Port Orford's, is that true?
Yes, it is. And that's, Port Orford has, the way we did Port Orford is it actually has parking on both sides. You wouldn't be able to get that here. So you'd either, if you did the bike lane, if you don't do a bike lane, then the parking, I think there's probably a lot of risk as to going down that route for sure, that we wouldn't want to entertain. But the parking's the real thing. So through Gold Beach, it's still possible to get parking, you just shift that center lane back and forth with strapping to allow it on one side or the other. The next community I'm going to talk about is Cave Junction, which I actually reside in Cave Junction myself. At first I was a little apprehensive about going to the three-lane thing, and oh, gosh, it's going to be the end of the world, we're not going to be able to get through. Cave Junction has a pretty similar averaging of either traffic to Gold Beach. Cave Junction has a pretty similar averaging of daily traffic to Gold Beach, a little bit higher, way higher holiday peak traffic than Gold Beach. I can attest that the Monday after Labor Day, there's a backup coming into town, close to a half-mile long, queues out after about an hour, goes through, and it's back to business as usual. A little bit extra time turning, I find it also, out of business, taking a right turn, out of business on a Friday or Sunday, you'll feel that extra push of the traffic. You don't really have that exact same dynamics here. But as a community to reach out to or ask questions about, like Cave Junction's a really good example and resource, I believe. The response we got from the city after they did it was all positive, and similar to Port Orford, we went through, did its brand-new paving through there, it's, they elected to keep it that way. Here's a list of other communities that have done roadway configurations. Our highest in the region is Ashland. They have 16,000, a little over 16,000 averaging of daily traffic, and that increases even more significantly in summertime when college is in session. This one, ODOT was apprehensive about doing, it's, we knew there was going to be delay, the community had a strong desire to do it, they put it in, and it actually worked a little better than we were expecting, and everything flows. Reedport, we've discussed that a little bit, it's still rather early, we just got it really redone this last summer. We did have some queuing, I think that was, must have been Labor Day.
Labor Day, Fourth of July.
Labor Day, Fourth of July. And ironically, we had queuing not quite as bad before, even in their previous roadway configuration, had queuing as well. We can pull back some data, it was about a 30-second increase for through traffic compared to previous years before.
Sir?
I have a question about Reedport, we didn't do the full town.
We did not do the full town.
We're not crazy.
Yeah, we're not crazy. We only did the, I call it the south end, they, because I think...
You go to Wednesday, it goes back to the four lanes.
Yeah, once you go across the slough, then it goes back. It actually doesn't go to four lanes, it goes to a five-lane section. So we hit the four-lane section down to a three.
And that was really driven by pedestrian requests, they really wanted to change that culture up there and have better pedestrian access, and thought this was kind of a recommendation to do that. They had some pretty serious pedestrian incidents through there.
Next one I'll hit, Phoenix, and Jen is probably a little more aware of this than I. They're a different situation where Phoenix is a couplet, they restriped the couplet down to a single lane in each direction, and then subsequently decided one of the directions, they went back to two lanes.
Aaron, can you describe a couplet?
Oh, okay, couplets.
There's a white one behind you, start.
So a couplet, it's basically you have one-way traffic in each direction separated by blocking. So you have like a northbound, northbound, Cusbeau, yeah, Cusbeau, northbound are the couplets. So with that, when you, to reduce a lane, you don't gain all the same benefits in a couplet system as you do in a single road. None of the turning conflicts, all those benefit conflicts, points get better, because you're, you're not going to stop the left turn, or the car coming behind you making the left turn, you're not waiting for anybody going the opposite direction. So kind of different one, they had a negative outcome to the roadway reconfiguration. Part of that, I believe, was to their design. There's definitely things that could have been done every, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Jen, about that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think with Phoenix, one of the things is, and we'll touch on this in, is this the second to the slide? In the next slide, a little bit, but Phoenix had a vision for their downtown, and when they developed the cross-section, they implemented it in a way that wasn't full, like the curb extensions weren't actually all the way out as far as they should have been, and the lane configurations were not quite right. So as a driver, it was very confusing, it is, it's still in place. It's very confusing, and you're driving through town, and then there's this giant huge bike lane next to you, and some people don't understand it's a bike lane, so they're driving the bike lane. So a lot of it is about vision and then execution, and we'll talk about that in a minute.
So the next two are both recent roadway reconfigurations, and they're similar average daily traffic to what we have in Gold Beach. I don't know a lot of history, but it's another resource. And I would encourage, if you guys want to proceed, to reach out to these other communities and kind of get their official opinion, especially after, as a city, or what they would say.
How long has that been operative in Le Pine?
Le Pine has been a while, that one's older.
Twenty-fourteen, I think?
Yeah. Yeah, Mill, Free Water is very recent.
So they'd be a good source.
Yeah.
Because they're roughly about our size, too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
A similar context as well, sort of mixed use. And then a similar context in Le Pine, where there's a mixed use, and then there's a kind of a downtown, you're much more urban context, but that edges.
Yeah, we just threw that not so long ago, and the League of Oregon City, was that in Ben, coming back a moment, I noticed that.
So I'll say our, kind of our next steps, as ODOT, we are supportive of a three-lane section through Gold Beach. By no means are we going to come in here and say, we're ODOT, this is our highway, we're making three lanes, this is a, it has to be a community-led effort. So we're here as a resource, anything we can do to presentations, anything we can help out with questions, that type of thing, we're here, the decision ultimately is really at the local level.
And just to tag on to that, I mean, I think you all have a pretty good idea, I'm the bike ped person, so clearly I have, my poker face isn't great on this one, but I do want to offer the fact that I do, I want, I want the city to be the drivers, obviously, and you are going to be the drivers of either direction, right? There's no reason in going forward with anything if the city isn't in love with this concept, because really, you have to look at the benefits and the trade-offs, because there will be trade-offs. And I want to reiterate, too, that we are resources, I consider myself a bit of a switchboard, so if you want me to put you in touch with some of those communities, I'm happy to do that, and I'm also a librarian's daughter, so I have some resources, I'm good at research, and I actually put together a resource sheet. I am not an IT person's daughter, and my computer did not function today, so I did not get that resources sheet to Jody in time, but I will share it. And there's some really great videos on this resource sheet, including the Iowa DOT that talks a lot about the four-to-three lane and different contexts and the benefits, and there's really good videos and graphics, and it can really help explain. We get a little wonky with two-way left turn lanes, and turn pockets, and couplets, and all that thing, all those kinds of things, and it can really help explain it more and give you a good visual. So just a couple of things that I've seen in my experience in working on some of these other projects, as far as keys to success, if the city did want to move forward, is having really good, clear goals and objectives. Again, so, you know, if you do have a vision to pursue this, then have good, written-down reasons as to why you want to. We want to further economic development, we want to slow traffic down, we want to improve safety, whatever those things are. Because as Darren mentioned, those 10 seconds to people can feel like eternity, and frankly, nobody is our best, most patient self when we're behind the wheel, and we are so passionate about driving and so passionate about things that alter our roadways, so you will hear feedback. So having those good, clear goals and objectives will really help you go back to that and say, okay, sure, I understand it took you 10 more seconds to get through town, but remember, we were working towards these economic development goals. And the other thing is the data piece. Again, if people are going to come in and say, hey, it took 10 seconds, or it took an eternity to drive through town, and you can go back to your data and say, before, we know that it took 56 seconds, and now it takes a minute. So that's really four seconds on average, so maybe you just hit it at a bad time, let's continue to study this and make sure that we're following, you know, these same metrics as we make these measurements. And again, yeah, we're just here to really be supportive and to be helpful, no matter which direction you want to go, and to give you more resources. And one of the things that Aaron mentioned a few times with some of the other communities is this pilot potential. I really truly believe in the pilot project, because you can look at it and try it out and see. And that's what Ashland did, that's what Port Orford did, and it can be really helpful. I've known other communities, the City of Eugene did a pilot on a very busy urban commercial corridor and did before and after measurements. It can really help people get a good grasp of what it's really going to feel like, and since it's just paint, it's really easy to put back. So I believe there's some safety money, that's what the funding bullet is, is that true?
Yeah.
Potentially, we can help with funding.
Salem's been very supportive of getting us safety funds to do these trial projects. So I believe, it's nothing we've gotten asked for the money yet, but I believe that would be money available for that.
Yeah, just to recognize, though, I mean, we did do an estimate, $100,000 to restriped it. So I mean, it's not, it's not cheap, so that's why we want all the upfront work, we really don't want to go back, you know, so a lot of work upfront to make sure this is something you guys are really interested in. Some communities have helped pay for that, just to have some skin in the game kind of thing. So I mean, those are all conversations down the road that we can have, if this is something you want to do. But some ideas is, we do have, so a pilot would get you a feel of it, it wouldn't get you everything probably you want, so it would give you a stripe like you see in Port Orford, but the bold outs wouldn't be there. Some of those other features that add a lot of value to a three-lane would have to come at a different, down the road, and we'd have to work on that later. We do, paving through Gold Beach was on our 150%, 50% list in the 21-24 step. It didn't make the 100% cut, so it was just off. There's a good chance that it will make that 25-20, 24-27 list. And if it does, you know, then, you know, so we have some time, I guess, to talk about a pilot. You could pilot for a few years. Ideally, we'd make a determination just before that project goes, and then we could put it back when we repaved it, so we're not paying another $100,000 to put it back if we had to. Or we stripe it the way it is in the project.
Thank you, Darren. Marla, you had a question?
Thank you, Darren, that was my question, like, are you saying that we're scheduled to be repaved around 2047?
2024 to 2027, somewhere in there. There's a good chance it'll be on the list. We won't know for another couple of years here and now.
That's a long way off.
It is, it is. So you could do, you could do a pilot and say, we're going to do a five-year pilot, or we could do a shorter pilot, and if you really struggle with it, what we've done with some communities is say, hey, you guys help, they're going to put it back if you really don't like it, you know. So I mean, there's lots of options there to talk about.
Wasn't it going to be 2022?
What's that?
Wasn't it going to be 2022?
If it made the list.
Oh, and it just didn't.
It did make the list, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Marla?
I noticed in Port Orford that where the lines have been covered up, there's a lot of divots, and so do you, is there some repair that gets done with that as well, or is that just, does that remain until you get the whole street repaved?
That remains until... That's one of the downfalls to the pilot, is you're going to see those old lines, we can't get that real good. We could spend some more money and do some seals in there, but then it's a darker color than the other, and there's...
It's a little distracting.
It is, it is, yeah. There's not a great option with that, and so that's why you might want to wait till closer to a paving project to do the pilot. There's lots of options, I guess, we can talk about, but do recognize that that will be there until we pave.
We, transportation nerds, call those ghost striping. So now you know, a new term for the day.
One final question.
I just wanted to say, though, in Ashland, it's actually, it was implemented, what?
What are we talking about?
The ghost striping. So the road dig is a pilot still, it hasn't been repaved, it's been ghost striped for a long time now.
At least five.
At least five years. And I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen here by any means, but what I'm saying is that it looks bad, but it hasn't had, we haven't had any safety issues with that ghost striping issue.
All right, Marla.
Thank you. First of all, you guys have been amazing and very supportive, and we want to thank you for that. It's rightly felt by Gold Beach, and Rain Street, and our town, so thank you all. The two questions are, number one, if you, if we did, were able to get safety funds to repave as a pilot project, have you seen other towns that have done it quite a ways before the repaving comes up, and how has that been? The second question is bump out curbs, curbs or replacement of curbs, where does that money come from?
So the Ashland one's a great example, that one we did as a pilot, and they still haven't got paved, and it's been five years. Port Orford, we're hoping to pave sooner than we're going to get it paved, it's probably going to be four years, five years before that gets paved. So those two examples, I think, we've had out there. And no real issues, except what you described. You will see that old stripe a little bit, we'll do our best to get rid of all we can. But you guys got this open grated mix also through there, and that's really hard to get the old paint out of there.
Yet another nerd terminal. To your second question, that when the project comes through, the curb ramps will need to be addressed, the ADA curb ramps through town, and what we're seeing is sometimes it's actually easier to design a curb ramp with a curb extension. So those, I would say that we would wait until the decision is decided by the community until we started putting curb ramps in when that paving project comes through. Does that make sense?
And ODOT pays for that?
Yes.
And does ODOT also give us wider sidewalks? Because we have more road open.
And Jody can shoot me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the sidewalks are technically yours through Gold Beach, if I'm not mistaken.
They actually belong to the...
The property owners.
Property owners.
The only sidewalk we own is the one in front of the city.
So we don't have, we would handle the bold outs and the kind of the extension, but we don't, we don't own sidewalks in Gold Beach.
All right, I'm going to do something real quick. I'm assuming that you were through with your presentation at this time, and I want to thank you very much for that. But I'm going to do something a little bit different, just by a show of hands, based on what you've heard tonight from ODOT, how many would be kind of amenable to this project?
Can staff have a chance to, like, offer some information? It's like, okay, ODOT's given theirs, but their staff has some concerns that I think need to be discussed before people decide whether they think this is a good idea or not one.
Stay tuned. Go ahead.
Okay, are you guys done here?
Yeah.
Okay. Darren, I'm going to go ahead and give you your jump drive, otherwise I'll forget it, because I saw you had some stuff on there that you...
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, so I typed this up for the council members, I can provide it to other people if they want it, you have copies of it, I gave copies to ODOT. And I just, first off, I just want to say that I appreciate, you know, you guys are awesome, you've done this really great work, I don't want to in any way, you know, degrade what you're saying, or try to argue with you, or anything like that, so I just, you know, the press is here, I just want that totally for sure, that I'm not trying to argue with ODOT.
You do that all the time, what do you do?
Yeah. Yeah, I do that all the time. But as Mr. Mayor had asked Sergeant Miller for input from a public safety standpoint, and we, from planning, public safety, and public works... we, from planning, public safety and public works, there's some specific concerns that are very location-specific, that we will contact those other communities, because I think this is a conversation, this needs to be a very deep discussion, especially since, you know, we're talking years out here, so we got lots of time to plan. But there are, Gold Beach is unique, I would say, and I need to contact these other communities just to verify this, but just comparing us to, like, Cape Junction or to Port Orford, there's certain things that Gold Beach has that those communities don't have that greatly impact the flow of traffic within our community. Okay, so, and I'm just going to give you the Reader's Digest version, the council can read all this. If Main Street wants copies of it, I'll be happy to give it to you. But obviously, Gold Beach is the county seat, so all of those facilities access directly off of Highway 101. They're not off on side streets like some other communities. The fairgrounds, the hospital, that's the only hospital in the county that's directly accessed. And when I say directly, it doesn't, they don't have a driveway there, but the only way to get to the hospital is off of Highway 101. And as you saw, that Fourth Street intersection is one of the constrained intersections. The courthouse complex, which is the jail for the whole county, so we have all of the, any kind of law, you know, civil or criminal is at that facility at the end of town. The jail is there. So we have specific concerns about queuing at those particular areas, the ability for people to quickly get where they need to go during these events. So it's like, so I appreciate that ODOT has provided us with this, and it talks about safety. And again, I'm in no way, because I totally agree that, yes, we've all, every one of us has experienced those times where somebody zooms around us on the right or the left and tries to run somebody over. We've all experienced that. So I'm not in any way saying that that isn't a safety issue. It's just, there are other safety issues that I also want, you know, we need to balance both of these and consider both sides of the public safety thing. All of the city facilities are accessed directly on 101. If you ever come here to pay your water bill, you will notice that that driveway entrance into our, into City Hall is pretty bad, because it's, there is not even a car length there. You know, when you come out of it, you're right at the intersection. It's better that we have access through to Ray's, but that brings us to Sixth Street, which, for those of us that grew up around here, that was our first signal light. In fact, I think we got it in high school, didn't we? Yeah. The reason why Sixth Street has a signal light is because of the schools, okay? Every child in Central Curry County that rides a bus goes through that intersection twice a day during school times. And so those buses come out through Sixth Street, they go to the high school, they come back onto Highway 101. So those are all things, and I think we've all been there during times of when school is out. And again, these are peak times, as Aaron had said, so this isn't like all day long. But I just want us as a community to think about these times that we know are peak times. The high school is another example. I think we all know what the high school parking lot is like during football season. I mean, it's bad during that time, and then there's other events. Fair time, that during fair, the whole south end of town is a mess. So I'm not saying that having one lane, that certainly would probably preclude having the fair break, because we wouldn't, that would totally, we would totally have to revamp. It's already hard enough to have the fair break on public services, but if we only had one lane to send people to, that's probably not going to happen. I personally don't care if we have the fair break, but I know that there are people that that is something that is important to them, so we need to think about those. Third Street, Aaron mentioned this, this was, we specifically, Mr. Mayor and I had specifically talked to ODOT earlier last year about, I pretty much figured that a signal was out of the question, just because I know we don't rate that, the issues that are there are not going to rate that high. But that arguably is the worst intersection. You know, something would have to be totally, something would have to be totally redone there to make it where it would work. And I just want to point out, only pharmacy in Central Curry is right there, the library is right there, that's the alternate route to the hospital if Fourth Street is not available, which it was not available recently. So that was the only way to get to the hospital was through Third Street, unless you want to go all the way around on Sixth. So, and then finally, from a planning standpoint, where we're different from Port Orford is that we do not have alternate, parallel north-south routes through town for locals. So like, the traffic that comes through the tourists and other traffic, they don't know that you can go off the street and go over this way to get over to there. But those of us that live here, we don't have, I live on Eighth Street, there's no way for me to get to my house unless I get on Highway 101. There's no way. It's a dead-end street. And most of the parallel north-south routes to 101, three, maybe four streets at best. Back in the day, we used to be able to go 11th Street, come around, but you can't do that anymore. So I just want us all to be, to make sure that this is a big and full discussion, and like Darren said, that there's give and take for both. If we leave it the way that it currently is, we know that there's issues, we've already talked about them. If we were to change it, there's issues, we need to talk about those too. So I just want to make sure, like, when Mr. Mayor's saying, let's have a show of hands, it's like, whoa, 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 we need to have more discussion before we have a show of hands here. One of the, to address something that Jenna had, we deliberately included in our urban renewal plan specifically a bike pedestrian route through the port on Airport Way, because we definitely knew that that section of Gold Beach is the worst part for bike head. They would come out, they would exit here. We're actually talking to the port about, you know, we have to partner with them to do that. But that, for us, was the best way to kind of make it a win-win, where we could, without reconfiguring the highway, how can we get pedestrians and bicyclists in a safe way, where it also, it's a good, you know, it's a scenic way to go, so you can see nice things there. And then the question to Sergeant Miller, and I'm going to let Sergeant Miller and Will just kind of throw their two cents in when I'm done here. I think I would like to see some emergency services data, and those are conversations that we can have offline. But, and then I also wanted to, because I'm always the official rainer on everybody's parade, and I'm sorry if that's what I have to do. I mean, I have to think of the worst-case scenario and be the devil's advocate. But I will say that one area that I feel like could totally and completely benefit by road diet is more street to port. That when, when, as Aaron said, back in the 90s, when ODOT was saying, you know, let's build freeways here, it was like, all of us were like, oh my God, what was ODOT thinking? Because it's two lanes to four lanes to two lanes. I mean, so that section there, and as you come into town, that would be a good opportunity for beautification, to make a beautiful entrance into you coming off the bridge. We could do something really beautiful on that end. So I don't want to make it sound like I hate everything. So I think there is an opportunity there where it could, that could be a win-win, where definitely that's where we get a lot of our speeders, is going down that hill or coming into town, shooting up that hill, because like you said, they see the lanes and they go, woohoo, I can go now. So from a safety standpoint, that would slow things down for us and could benefit, you know, with beautification as well. So Will and Sergeant Miller, if you guys could come up, if there's anything that you want to add, please throw it out there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think he covers most of it. I remember probably about 20 years ago, we met with Jim Riss, and Jim, this was bantered about at that time, and one thing he brought to Public Works at that time, not the councils, he said, if we were able to narrow the highway, he said, I want to see 50 to 100% of your urban traffic on your own roads and off, because we know that we're going to cause, you know, jam-ups, the ability for people to go through town will be much more constrained. And at that time, they looked at Jim and said, we just don't have enough right-of-way. We were constrained at that time by choice pieces of property, so we couldn't interconnect the streets. And so, and today, that's a, there's a strength to hold on in the same places. Just in talking with staff and community members about it, they really were, ooh, like this, about going down to two lanes, you know, going north-south, just because they've grown up with, you know, four lanes here and are used to it. On a personal note, we shut down the highway on a regular basis, either during an emergency or for a maintenance on water sewer. And so in doing this, we've got boots-on-the-ground trial run by just shutting the lane off and seeing what happens, and that's sometimes in summertime. And we did it once where we actually did what you're talking about, where we shut down one northbound, one southbound, and within about five minutes, we watched at Sixth Street, the traffic was already beyond Eighth Street at that light. Summertime, people backed up, and I grabbed the Public Works Director at that time and I said, look at, because we were looking at it from a safety viewpoint, as we're trying, we're trying to move traffic safely through our zones, keep the employees safe, because we're out there working on the right-of-way temporarily, of course. But it offered us insight to how the traffic reacted for a short-term delay, but an entire lane take. And so I always kept that in back of my mind in case this discussion came up, to be, as Jody said, very cautious about going too quickly. We talked about maybe doing a trial run with Combs, to where you take a lane for a week on either side.
Like in the summer?
In the summer time.
And see what happens.
And we can get some of the engineers to come and just rotate through and look at some of the pinch points, some of the places where we have really narrow right-of-way, like up by the courthouse. Look at places where people can't escape the traffic and just see how it models out. And then there wouldn't be any painting or any real money. It's the cheapest alternative, you know, to try to run a trial.
Will. Let's just keep it right now to who is speaking. I'm not going to take any questions right now. What are you through with your end of this?
Pretty much. Jody, you know, covered the emergency services. That was, that's very important, just because of the layout of our town, the needs of it and emergency capacity, but also, you know, the students, the parents, the traffic. I see it at Sixth Street, there are certain places in our town where the movement through is, for nine months, is tough. And Sixth, you know, Sixth Street intersection, ended services, the schools with the busing and the parents. Get involved, be there when you got, you know, hundreds of students and parents, and you can see this model out, and you're like, oh, okay, you can see some of the ramifications if we have less lanes in town. So just, that's all I encourage folks to do, is maybe just keep their eyes open. Because we experienced it in Public Works, we're trying to get to a utility, we're trying to turn water off, we're working on a roadway during construction and dealing with these folks ourselves, boots-on-the-ground, and they're not happy campers if they're, if you hold them up or there's an alteration to what they're used to, there is a little bit of friction.
Thank you, Sergeant. Sergeant?
All right. I'll start off on a positive note of, I like the fact that we could possibly slow people down, right? That's, that would be nice. On the other side of that, though, I would be worried about our officers when they make a traffic stop, something like speeding, how much of the lane are we going to take up? Part of the officers can be exposed to oncoming traffic if we have partial, lane partially blocked. Yes, they could probably go in the center of the turn part, but it's just a, that's a concern that I would have, specifically for our officers. My other concern would be, what would happen if we have a mortal accident, how we're blocking the only lane, you know, for us, being a community that we are, it could take 30 to 45 minutes before we get a record. Well, okay, now we have the whole lane blocked for 45 minutes, and that's going to be a pretty bad, pretty bad storm. Another thing for emergency response, so for not only myself, but for the fire department, you know, people are really good about pulling over to the right and stopping. However, you know, sometimes people get a little excited, you know, and they may just stop at the middle of the road, or they'll stop on the turn lane. So those are concerns that I would have, that in emergency response, people do get excited, they don't always do the right thing. And if they do, now I'm stopped behind them and can't get to where I'm going, or, same thing would go for an ambulance or for a fire truck. The other one, Third Street, my goodness, it's already a mess. You know, I think you said it was a D. I live on Third Street, I would probably say it's an F.
If you're in that moment.
On a Sunday morning, but for the afternoon, it's already a problem. So for my own selfish reasons, I would watch out for Third Street. If this was, was something that was approved, I would really caution, street parking. Brookings has a horrible time with their street parking right by the theater. They're constantly getting accidents where they're knocking off mirrors, mechanical in your door. We do have some narrower streets than Port Orford, so that's just some concerns I would have in regards to that.
Sergeant Miller was an officer in Brookings, so that's experience.
Right, yeah, he was indeed. I'm going to cut this off. I mentioned earlier about having a show of hands. I'm not going to do that now, because both sides, all I'm going to ask now is that you think about it. You've heard both sides now. I want to thank you, Ms. Redder, for bringing up short on that prior to doing it. And then you think about, no, that's quite all right, that's quite all right. The best thing is for everybody to have everything they need to know before they make a decision, or at least recommend a decision to the council. So therefore, we've got some very, very good information, both pro and con. And of course, it's not going to happen real quickly anyway, so you have plenty of time to think about it. So if you, if you do, it would be nice to hear a little bit of feedback from you as well, too. Yes?
So ODOT has put a lot of work into this, and I honestly don't want tonight to be no, and you guys go away and we're done, like you said at the beginning. I think that there are, I have written down some questions. I think there's some questions that staff would like to kind of flesh out with ODOT that I could bring back to the council, and then we can continue this discussion, because it sounds like if this is something that, if we decided something that we want to do, we have time. So it's not like we have to decide now or even next week or next month. So if the council's okay with that, I'll continue talking to ODOT with those questions. And then also, if you have questions that you would like me to filter down there, and the same with audience members, if there's specific things that you have questions about, come see me and we'll continue this discussion. So I would say, and again, council decision, but at this point, I would say, you know, let's leave the door open and do some more research.
Counsel, do I have any problems with that?
I think now that we've got a lot of information that we, none of us had before, I would like to just be set upon it, not anything discussed, so if we could put it on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Okay.
I don't want to see this just go by the wayside.
Thanks, sir, that's a good idea. Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to thank the Transportation Department for doing such research and bringing it to us, and for staff co-mended, and Mr. Mayor for running this kind of like a town of policy, although it wasn't, I would say. You've got a lot of people here, you let them talk, and that was very, very kind of a good call. I think it has taken up a lot of your time, and when I'm done, when you're done with the section, I just want you to get a break.
I was, believe it or not, what I wanted to do, and we were on the same wavelength there, we've been sitting here for a couple hours. But Mr. MacArthur has been sitting here for a couple hours as well, too, and he has a citizen's comment. And what I'd like to do is to go ahead and move him up to next. After you are through, sir, then we are going to take about a 10-minute break, folks. So, are we all through here?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much for coming, Will. We really appreciate it.
And Will, Sergeant? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being there. Andrew, yes?
For folks with questions that they want Jody to take for ODOT, from staff, are they welcome to take the questions for me, they pay for... they welcome to take the questions through, will they pay for a mirror and pencils, and I'll try to collect that for them?
That would be great.
Yeah.
And then, actually, that would be great. In the meantime, if you want to come in and see Anthony in the office.
Okay.
Anthony would be happy to meet with you if you come in during work hours.
All right. Real quickly, I am sorry, Patrick, for making you wait this long, but I didn't realize it was going to take that long. I'm going to get you in and out as fast as we can, sir.
I'll be very grateful. Members of council, thank you very much for your time, I'm very busy. I live across from Mayor on Hill Rock Street. I'd like to address you for a couple minutes about the sound signal. Coast Guard has, has not projected. It's a Model 232A. It's the exact same model that is in Brookings, with some exceptions. In Brookings, the device is now on a concrete pad, and it is activated when someone is at sea and counting, a keys or microphone, DHD microphone, five times. Then the sound, the facility picks this up, and it responds for 30 minutes, and then it works the cycle. The one in Brookings also has baffles in it, so it is not only direction, the sound is up to sea on it. Here, the one we have here goes off every 30 seconds, 120 pounds an hour, 2,880 pounds per day. It goes off for three seconds. That's 10 full percent of the whole clock this thing is going off. It's loud enough so that the rally pictures on my wall, so it's quite a distraction. And it's also not very conducive for marketing. If you want to market an area for real safe development, for building new houses like the whites are doing, it's going to be more difficult if you have an industrial dong going off in the background all the time. And when they're building this thing on Airport Way, they'll hear it every time it goes off. So, the Coast Guard has the ability to modify this device so that we have builder's safety when we need it, and we have, we don't have the problems otherwise. I have written to Coast Guard, and their council attorney on the issue. That's why I'm here, because I know that I'm just one guy with a complaint. The city council and the mayor are a completely different entity, and I would like your influence to help me get them to modify it. It is out, it is in violation of our city municipal ordinance on noise and on nuisances every time it goes off. It is also in violation of Chapter 7 of their own technical manual. I've read that technical manual, that's why I know how to be baffled and read them. So, the device is in violation of their own technical manual, it's in violation of the ordinances of this town, and it is something that will stymie nice development because of this constant noise, from the middle of May until the middle of October. So, it's my wish and prayer that the council will give me some help on this, through by a letter, or by a call, or just by consent, so that I can say to the senator, I was talking to Senator Murphy about it last week, I would like to be able to say, next time I see him, that I have the support of the council in getting this issue modified. That's my, that's my, that's my part for you, sir. Thank you very much, counsel, the council for introducing me here, and thank you very much for your time here.
You're quite welcome, sir. Yes, counsel.
I was wondering if we could get a copy of your letter, because I assume it's got those technical things in it?
Yes, yes.
And then maybe we can modify it and send it as well.
Okay, certainly.
And Commissioner Boyce is right back here, and I'll bet you he would like a copy of his as well.
Thank you.
He's very good.
No, no, we never.
He was in my office the other day.
But, you know, it's amazing, because we had a problem like that some years ago. I don't know, Counselor Kaufman, you may remember, when it was a low, that beacon out there, signal, whatever, whatever you want to call it, was malfunctioning, and it was nothing but a low droning sound for, for a few days. And it was, I mean, it was.
Mad assistant.
And, oh, anyway, we did get ahold of the Coast Guard at that time, and then within a day or two, they had that thing taken care of. But, we had a lot of, lot of complaints on it back then.
It's a, it's a thing that, you know, we all are not a Coast Guard, they're the heroes, they're the good guys, like the firemen, but they're, they're the people who keep us alive and safe, so I don't mean to disparage the Coast Guard, I'm a big family of Coast Guard. It's just that they made a bureaucratic wonder here, and it's going to take a little jingling out to make them understand that. And their technical manual also states that their locate, their position of this thing must consider adjacent structures, horizontal alignment, the nearest residences, and noise pollution. So, they're in violation not only of the city ordinances here, but they're in violation of their own technical manual. And it's, it's a strict point that they have to, they, they gave me a rundown, they said they couldn't baffle it, but then I found out that the baffles are simply pieces of sheet steel this size that are painted in collumens was what's made for that. So, it's an easy problem to solve. It's going to affect all the development we're trying to do on that end of town if this thing goes off every 30 seconds, the right of the clock. It was certainly, it would be a terrible reason by increasing property, if I was standing on piece of property, and this thing, like this siren going up there down, it's going to interrupt your conversation. If I was at my house, if I was at my house, and I was going by my house, and this thing was going off, I'd say, I would find it quite a town. So, it does affect development, it is affecting the citizens, it is in violation of the law, and is in violation of their technical manual. So, it's, it's not a huge bridge to hurl except for the students and such people that made that quarter. I understand how difficult it is getting on the changeovers. One time I was involved with the US Navy about the flight training pattern, and phone call from the right place changed the Navy's flight plan. They were flying over some Austrian nets. I called the Autobahn Society. Somebody from the Autobahn Society knew somebody in the Navy, and the next day, they changed the permanent, they changed that training program permanent. So, outside can be done, I know it can be done, it's just that I don't have, have a phone number. So, but, but someone does, and it is a problem that can be handled easily, because it makes common sense. So, thank you again for your time. I will bring copies of the letters that I've sent to the senators to you, so that you can see exactly where we are in this conversation.
Thank you.
So, thank you again for your time.
I agree, sir. And she, the administrator is busy scribbling down, so I'm going to, but all one has.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'll drop out more of the letters for you if you have more questions.
Pardon me, sir?
I'll drop out tomorrow with council, with copies of the letters that the council will, not for you, so that we can.
No, that'd be good. Yeah, you can go directly to the office.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
All right.
So, 10-minute break?
Dear people, we are going to take about a 10 minutes.
Okay. Oh, you've got snacks?
I, I'm going to have a drink.
These are actually good. They have those little crowns.
The Council President was asking about snacks.
So, in short, that is what we're going to be going, how we do that, I don't play a role in this whatsoever. This is strictly up to the council, the council, or puts up for election or appointment, another member of the council to fulfill that position for one year. So, with that in mind, counsel, go ahead while I eat the rest of my cookie.
While you eat in front of us.
I would like to recommend Larry Brennan for Mayor Pro Tem. I've done it, Ms. Kaufman's done it, I think it's time to share, share the love that I have for the diocese to Mr. Brennan, if he would accept, that would be my recommendation.
I'll make that the second, if that's a motion.
We can discuss this, if it's difficult.
Okay, motion has been made, and have been seconded, there's only a discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, but that was taken care of quite nicely.
Okay.
All right.
I think that you're already on, you can sign checks already? Okay. And so, we'll just keep, Counselor Kaufman can sign checks, so he'll be the, the council person, and then he'll be the Pro Tem one. Because we usually have the mayor, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and one council member, so we don't have to change the card at the bank.
All right. The annual committee and commission listening, this is one I wanted to get into or discuss a little bit prior to the meeting itself. As it stands now, we have three committees. There's a budget committee, and we have two vacancies there. The budget committee is exceptionally important. It sets the spending tone of this city for the next fiscal year. It usually requires one night, possibly two. And the administrator, bless her heart, usually has food at these meetings. Not usually, she always has.
Delicious, too.
Yeah, and it is good. It can even be pizza or whatever it is. So you aren't exactly asked to perform this duty free, you know, totally without a little bit of grace, if I can use that word, is that kind of?
Yep.
Why, thank you. So, I would like to, just for, and I know the press is here, and we need two positions filled on there. We generally meet in April, so at any rate, planning commission, we have two vacancies there as well, and we'd like to have those filled if we can. Again, another important position. None of these positions that we're talking about are not, are unimportant. Each one is important, each one of them has a hand in determining the way that this city goes. So, it is not something that, you know, can just be laughed off or, or considered lightly, because they are important. Finally, urban renewal, the Citizens Advisory Committee. As it stands, urban renewal is headed by the council, by members of the council. The mayor doesn't have anything to do with that, other than being a member, I can go ahead and make comments here and there. But, there are also four at-large positions, four citizens, to participate in urban renewal. And we like that, simply because we want to make sure that we are not doing something in a vacuum. We want people, citizens within the community, putting their input into it. So, and as it stands right now, we don't have anybody. We have nobody, period. So, once again, those four positions need to be filled, and personally, I'd love to see them filled. I'd like to see all of these filled. So with that in mind, counsel, if you have anything further that you'd like to add to that, please feel free to. Administrator, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Just to thank Counselor Madison, she said that she had posted an announcement on social media and pointed them to our website that has the form. There's forms on the website for, to sign up, I mean, you have to turn them in, but applications, and then also here at City Hall.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, with that, and we've already done citizens' comments. So we have ordinance of resolutions. Now, there are a couple of them. The first one is resolution R-1920-07, authorizing the, pardon me, IFA one improvement loan, and then we'll get to yours in a few minutes. So with that, administrator, what do we got here?
Again, as I, as I said in the agenda report, this is more of the paperwork process that we have to complete for the loan that was approved this summer. I did, just as a gentle reminder, I included the previous reports that we had on this just to kind of bring you up to date. Will stay for the meeting in case you have any specific questions, but this is just another, one of the formalities that we have to complete. And then once, if you adopt this resolution, then there's some stuff that I can need to have Mr. Mayor do tomorrow as far as executing the loan documents. And then, that just gets us one step closer. So, if you have questions about the project, you know, Will can talk about those, or if you want to talk about it at some other time, you know.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to point out that a 1% loan and $530,000 forgivable, which is also a grant, also can be grant, they don't word it that way there, though. That's, that's good, so.
It's forgivable if we meet our conditions, that's why they say that. But, but it's pretty easy, you know, I mean, you just follow what it says. And last time we got, we had half a million on the wastewater plant, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm issuing staff a compliment, please take it.
Oh.
All righty. Counsel, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss? Anything further on this? Looks pretty kind of dry to me, but then, again, you guys are the ones making the decision. So, yes, Counsel Brennan, did you have anything, sir?
I was going to make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R-1920-07, resolution in the city of Gold Beach authorizing a loan from the state drinking water revolving loan fund by entering into a financial contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that?
A second.
I think Counsel Brennan started a little bit quicker. So, a motion has been made, it has been seconded, is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel. All right. Administrator, we've got something else here now, too.
Okay, so, from the urban renewal meeting, if we could, if we could add a resolution to do the inter-fund loan between the sewer reserve fund and the urban renewal agency, subject to those conditions that Chairman Kaufman, I'll put him in written form, but if you would be willing to approve that, I could do the form, and then have Mr. Mayor and Chairman Kaufman from urban renewal, if you will allow us to do that, then we can move forward this month, and we won't have to wait till next month, if that's okay.
Counsel?
So, it would be, if you decided that you wanted to do that, it would be R-1920-08, and then it would be authorizing an inter-fund loan between the sewer reserve fund and the urban renewal agency.
All right, and we have anybody prepared to make that motion? Counsel Kaufman?
I will make a motion. I'm ahead. R to approve resolution R-1920-07, to authorize a loan from our sewer reserve fund to the urban renewal agency in the amount of $350,000 at 3.5% interest. It should be formatted as a line of credit and distributed as such.
Well done. A lot better than I could have done.
And the actual written version will be done by the city administrator and finalized by the mayor. How was that?
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Motion has been made, counsel forgotten, is seconded. Is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And after I put that together tomorrow, I'll send copies of all of it to you guys before, you know, to make sure that you captured what you wanted, and then I'll have this new mayor sign it.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much. And if you guys are okay, well, Will, do you want to stay for the street? Yeah, you're, you're just long, you might just stay.
All right, right now, then we're going to move on to the update on Button Lane Dangerous Building.
Mr. Michaels is here.
Yes, she is. Yes, he is.
I have a photograph that, I did not print the ones that you sent me late today, but...
I do have pictures of that also.
And, but I did print off the one that he sent on, well, we took, we took a picture this afternoon and the ones from last month are in the packet.
Council Kaufman?
Just wanted to say that I have a conflict of interest. I don't want to be hard to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
As I said, this is the floor that I said I would clean down to.
No, it's a...
This is, this is what come off the floor. And I, it has still been at this point because this is in the way. It's the van from Wes's towing. And he said they're trying to, to, oh, the ladders are down off there now. But, and this is what it looked like last, last time I was here. And Wes's towing is supposed to be removing the van within the next, hopefully, couple of days. He told me last week he was going to move out Friday, but the trucks are supposed to be coming into the yard. Hasn't made it yet, so they cleaned the yard out so you can come out through this one. Once it's gone, CTR will come and remove that van that's full and it's going to be replaced and then I'll continue to fill it up, so.
All right, now, the only thing that I'm concerned with right now, firstly, and then of course, council, to their own discretion as well too. But, and I'd like to ask the administrator and also our public work superintendent, have you been, you've been out there and taken?
It's Mr. Michaels' property.
Yes.
Not for Quaid law.
Oh, okay. Then this is basically for the administrator then. In your, because I haven't seen it either for a while. In your considered opinion, is most of the safety issues, have they been taken care of with what's been done so far?
Yes, it's, it's down to just the trailer and the, you know, the undercarriage of the thing. And, yeah, there's cost base under there, but I, I don't, I don't think it's any more or less dangerous than when it was standing or any more or less dangerous than like at a trailer park. But the burnt debris and stuff has been removed and put into those bins, so.
Good, good. Well, thank you for that, sir. It'll be long on it.
Yeah, I'm going to continue progressing and then hopefully this spring. I've been underneath the trailer and believe it or not, all the two to sixes underneath are all sound. So I leave on the floor until spring, then I'm going to strip that off and dispose that and salvage that lumber to put with new lumber for a new floor. That's where I am.
All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions to ask, for sure?
And like I said, I've got a dumpster. I've already made the arrangements with CTRs. Once that one's gone, they're going to replace it, put another one. Yeah.
Are you satisfied with the progress that has been made?
At this point, yes, I am, I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so just to clarify for staff, are, are you ready to turn it back over to staff to handle as a nuisance violation if, if there's ongoing? Or do you want Mr. Michaels to come back next month? And either way is fine, I just want to clarify. Or would you, or do you want me to just report back on what's...
I can just report back on it.
Yeah, yeah, just, as long as the progress is continuing to be made.
It will be.
Yeah. And that's one thing, because it's been showing good faith in getting the stuff done. And as long as it continues, I don't see any real problems with that. Anybody else? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Okay, we've got the monthly update of the city's strategic plan goals. And we've got goal four, a safe community.
Okay, we had started way last year where we were going to review one a month and then some other things were going on. And so January is a good time to get back on it. So there is the review of our goal four. The change, the updates that staff has put in there are in yellow as they're shown in the, in the packet. If you have any questions, if you want me to add anything, if you want to discuss anything, but I'll just, I'll, I put our update. So you, you tell me what you want me to, if there's anything that you want me to do. And then we'll get back in the routine of reviewing one goal each month.
All right, counsel, do you have anything to ask or do you have a chair concerning the, yes?
On A, did you mean no changes proposed? It says no charges proposed.
Oh, yes, sorry. The grammar police was not there.
My concern with public safety is the ability to pay for it. And I know we're going to be talking later about streets. We're down in income and the general fund takes a big chunk of our income. So I'm concerned about financing long term. And then do we still want to keep the goal of the community shelter as part of a multi-use community center? Is that something we still want to consider? At one time we talked about doing a recreational district. That didn't pan out. And with the library and what they're doing, do we still need that goal?
I would say yes. I, I had spoken with the library director, Mr. Skinner, and he had some really interesting ideas that the library would like to partner on. And so while it's not something that we can probably finance ourselves, I think we should keep it as a goal. Ultimately, it would be nice to have, and what him and I had discussed and Mr. Newell and I have discussed this before too, is that if we, you know, obviously all of our facilities are located right here. It would be nice if we could have a facility and maybe we can utilize the library in that fashion or something on the east end of Bupington Park. But it would be nice if we could have, and I don't want to say an evacuation spot, but an emergency area that, that was more formalized. I mean, I think probably in an emergency, we could probably set something up somewhere. But if, so I think it's a good goal to keep and keep working towards, so. And Mr. Skinner, I want to say that he was going to talk to his board about some of the ideas that they had planned. And then we were going to talk again in a couple of months. So, so yeah, I think, I think it's worthwhile to keep it there.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Council Kaufman, do you have anything further?
What does the administration say about keeping that as a goal?
Well, I was going to give, I'd like to hear your response first, if you don't mind. If you have a response to that.
I, I don't, I wanted to know what the...
All right, all right.
You have a response?
Yeah.
I'm not pleased to leave you alone.
Got that, yeah.
Some of these are aspirational. I mean, you know, something to work for, work towards. And I, I think that is something that we should. You know, we all know that we're going to be, we're going to be on our own for a long time if there's any kind of event. I'm not going to say the T-word, but any kind of event, whether that's a fire or a flood or an earthquake or a...
Foregate.
That, so I need something aspirational to work for.
Council Pagan?
I agree, I think we should do that.
Pardon me, sir?
We can do that.
Council Campbell?
I concur.
All right. So that remains. Is there anything further in looking through this, this caution or attention that you'd like to address to the administrator?
Or that you want us to, staff to work on more, you know, is there a priority that you want us to work on related to any of those objectives of the goal? Okay, then we'll just keep doing what we're doing?
Yeah, sounds good to me. I don't hear any, any other comments.
Does anybody have any ideas on funding public safety?
Um, yeah, but we can talk about it if budget.
All right. Revisit the gas tax, street reserves charge. As we all know, it failed miserably.
After all the public input.
After all, yes. And the amazing thing was the public input ran almost five to one, something like that, in favor of the tax. And yet, when it came down to the real vote, it failed by two to one, at least. So, anyway, we're here to talk about it again. Yes?
Sir, with all due respect, there was like what appeared to be a political takeover. None of the city council members were willing to campaign for that because they were trying to hang onto the seat. And you don't campaign for a tax when you're trying to hang onto your seat. So if we do this when people are not running for office, we might have a better chance because we can't run for it.
Okay, well, this year's an election year, next year is not an election.
Unless we did it in May.
It's still an election year.
I don't, I don't know.
But we don't throw up on the ballot until November.
No, we don't, but...
But I guess what I, what I, what I want to know from you guys is that, do you want to revisit the fuel tax? Because there's a bunch of stuff that we need to do if that's something that the council wants to do. We did all this public input, citizens said that, okay, I mean, we have to pay for the street improvements somehow, so. And all the public input that we received was that they felt better. And we actually, what the proposition was, was that in the winter, in the off-season time, it was only going to be a 1% local tax. And then in the summertime months, it was going to be 4%, so that we would get more revenue during the time that we have non-locals buying more gas, which they, the attorney actually kind of threw that out from another community and I thought that was great. But it's just, I just, I just need to know so that I can plan for the next, if it's going to be this year or next year, because the election calendar, there's things you have to do so far ahead of time. Yeah.
Counsel Brennan?
So would the proposal of putting that back on the ballot be, you know, instead of the $2 per month street repair reserve surcharge?
Correct.
So I think if, I would be willing to go out into the public and educate because, I mean, I think we want to spread that, that, you know, cost to the people that are using our streets than just us. So maybe if it's looked at from a wider scope, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, sir.
Pardon me, go with it.
First, let's ask, what, what's the cost of, of this will be for May?
Well, May or November, that, that's the other thing too that we would need to know. Or do you want to do it next year on a non-election year? Because in '21, no, the mayor and council positions are not. The next election would be two years after this year. So '22 would be the next council year election.
I just think to, I mean, and one way to look at it is, we tried it. It didn't work, but I hate to add, keep adding things to the water bill. Just it's, it's just getting, you know, we keep, we add things to the water bill from, from water or sewer, but like I said, I hate to see, I don't want to waste the money on another ballot, but I hate to see the $2, another $2 added to the water bill. So I would rather, I guess, try an education for another ballot measure.
Okay.
I, I just don't understand if, you know, people wouldn't have a choice even if they don't drive if it's under water bill, you know what I mean?
Right.
So...
And that was bad, the whole reason.
Those people are getting punished basically for not driving just because, I don't, I don't get it. But yeah, I think, I guess we need to do another ballot measure, at least try. And just, you know, let them know, if you don't vote for it, it's going to be a raise in the water bill.
Well, and I, and I just want to clarify that it's not a raise in the water bill. It's just, that's just a way to, it's, it's a convenient way to do a billing because we already sent bills out for the water bill. So it wouldn't be, I, I just want to clarify that it's not a water sewer charge. It's just the only reason why it would be on the water bill.
I know, but the water bill is still going to get raised by $2.
Well, it's, it's the collection mechanism.
No, Counsel Brennan hit it on the, on the head, as far as I'm concerned. You either have, the way things are going, you can either do it with the gas tax or push down the show, we're going to have to add that fuel box. So the really, the best way is just to...
Or we don't, or we don't repair roads.
Or we're going to, or, and which then again is a safety concern. So at any rate, yeah, I concur wholeheartedly with him, truly do. Anything else? Counsel? Yes, ma'am?
Was the $2 a month surcharge, was that calculated based on the estimated revenue expected to come in from the gas tax?
No, that was, when I put the budget together, that was the lowest amount that I felt, you know, with, you know, we needed to start collecting revenue. That only comes up to about $25,000 a year. That's nothing. Where the gas tax, we were thinking, based on the figures that Brookings had, that, you know, we're probably looking in the $100,000 range.
So because ODOT was just here sharing that they have Gold Beach in their sights for repaving the next four years or so, that, that may be to our advantage as far as trying to sell it and getting everything down and looking forward, you know, just stuck in what's needed today, but a year or two from now, have some succession.
Yeah. Yeah, and none of our money goes to 101. Just want to clarify that. Or certain roads out in Hunter Creek are still in the county's maintenance jurisdiction. But, but yeah, I mean, we have, and, and I can provide everybody, because, yeah, so Counselor Madison and Pagan will work here when we have the engineering analysis. So I'll give you guys a copy of that. But basically, it's an inventory of all of the roads that the city owns, what the engineers came up with as far as like how much useful life is still left in them, what needs to be done, and then priorities on what, what needs to be repaired first and that type of thing. Of course, that doesn't take into consideration if we have failures like we, we had on Grizzly Mountain a couple of years ago. There was a slide and we had to just pay for that, so.
That's what we're 120 on.
What it costs more in the end if we're not maintaining our roads responsibly as far as public works goes? Because there's more impact to the services underground?
Yeah, I mean, think about it like your house. I mean, if you don't maintain your roof and roof starts leaking, then you're going to have dry rot and, I mean, it's, it's the same thing just on a larger level.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, if I, excuse me. Will, what is a, a kind of a guesstimate of, just based on your knowledge right now, of what we would need to repair what you would consider right now, holes in the street, what have you, that actually require repair right now?
You mean locations?
Well, not really locate, well, not, not so much location, but, but actual money? You know, what it would cost?
Generally, when you start spending about $40,000, you start getting a lot of bang for your buck from tidewater. They will trim down their tonnage price. What they're looking for is they're looking to produce about 100 tons worth of asphalt out of wetter burn-in a day. And then it's cost-effective for them to fire up the plant. And in doing so, our bids come in and we get competitive bids. If we're not doing a lot of work, it's difficult to get a, enough work done because the prices are so high. And what we find is we get small patch jobs that are emergencies because we have base failure or complete failure of the road. And that's, that's what we've done in the past is we simply don't have a budget. And the last large job we did is when we did the third street sidewalk project. We already had tidewater in town and we added... We already had tidewater in town, and we added to that project. And we overlaid Buffington Park, and we took care of all the emergencies at that time. If my knowledge serves me correct, that's been about four years ago. And since that time, we've had quite a few other base failures show up in town where the sub-base underneath the asphalt gets soft, and then the asphalt begins to fail. And we'll get in there, we'll continually put patches on it until it won't hold, and then we have to dig it up and dig up the sub-base and replace it with heavy rock and compact up the lifts. It just, one thing leads to another. But the roads begin to speak when they get water down in those, and they just start to unravel. Like it's larger, larger, larger. And you'll see, when you drive around town, you can see fresh patching where we've done what we have to do. If it gets really bad, we'll cut out large pieces and just simply call for hot mix to come in and do the repairs if we can ourselves, because that's the most costly.
So basically, though, what you're doing is putting a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid, and each one of those Band-Aids costs something, but then in the long run, you have to repair the whole thing anyway, so that the Band-Aids have just been nothing more than an extra cost.
Yes, but that's what we can afford at this time. And that hens to the conversation about trying to put together a funding model that's at least going to have emergency repairs built in. Because I think it was a learning experience coming through that one slide repair. I believe the sum total for that repair was $160,000. And the hit on the street fund was so large that we've been really running skinny on the street fund to try to rebuild enough money in there for the coalwork repair projects we have and other things. And just to get by, and get us another emergency crop set, because it's very expensive.
I mean, two years ago, when the plan was put together, which I'm closer to three years now, the estimate of, like, in a perfect world, we repaired everything that needed to be done, was $2.15 million. Okay, that was three years ago. So probably, that's probably closer to like $2.5 million now. So, and that's if we repaired everything, you know, to perfect standards, which obviously that's not going to happen. But we have to prioritize which ones are the greatest need. And we do try as best as we can, like, we're getting some work done with the SCA money by Riley Creek. There's alligator-ing of the pavement there, so that will get replaced, sidewalks. But all of those kind of nice-to-have things get put on the back burner when we have to do emergency repairs. So...
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Yes, ma'am?
We're ready to make a motion that we put the gas tax on identical to what we did in 2018 for the May ballot.
For the May ballot.
The May ballot? Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second, too, ma'am?
A second.
I think I heard Counsel Brennan go first. I'm going to give it to you.
Okay, and I believe that I have to have something back to you next month for, because I think the calendar, I'll verify that just to be sure, but I think the calendar, we have to have something adopted in February in order to get all this stuff done to be on the May ballot.
Okay, but before we worry about that, we'll sign up a motion. Is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Ah, yes, ma'am.
Counselor Pagano, please, now. Let me give a chance to talk.
I just don't think at this point I would want to try and put another fee tax out there when the back thing just went through and that kind of stuff. I just feel like it's not a good time. I think we need to kind of let it sit for a little bit, do a new one, and then try to go for something better.
Are you okay with the concept of the gas tax for streets?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. City Administrator, you have a report?
I actually do this one. There's copies in front of you, and I know it's really late, so we'll just go, like, zooming through this. The public works crew's been working at the park, clear brush, burning debris. The pre-fab bridge, we had budgeted, is hopefully arriving next week.
Tomorrow.
And that'll be for crossing on the east side to go to the new, like, trails up to the new park. And, yeah. So the police stats are attached for November and December, because now that we moved up, I don't think I was able to get even November ones in December. And also the year-end totals. The fire, the chief went to Texas last month, picked up our new engine, our new Type III engine. It's a monster. So I was hoping I would have some pictures for you tonight, but I don't. But Chief Kiger said that when the weather gets a little better, he wants to give you all a tour of both the Rescue Raid and the new Type III. So they're both pretty impressive machines, and will allow our department to get to more places with more water. So it's a win-win for both the city and for the Gold Beach, Water and Fire District. Visitor Center, the stats through the end of November are attached. Things are kind of high right now, obviously, because it's the off-season. But the last split season starts February 1st, so the crew is gearing up for that. If any of you are down at the visitor center, ask the folks down there to kind of give you a tour of the massive amount of flows that we bought. It's kind of cool to see how many that we actually get, and those actually get distributed and given away. Jane, who works at the visitor center, compiled a really cool list of where our visitors' home states and countries were for 2019. And she kind of did a quick little analysis that was fun to read about, like, who came the farthest. We had somebody from Kazik, from Kamchatka, on the peninsula of Russia, which, you know, suppose, Russia's actually kind of close to us. But just interesting, the different places where folks came from and how far they came. So that was really cool that she put that together. December upfront is a quiet month, so not a lot to report there. I did take the second week of December off because that is our quiet time. Got the bookkeeping caught up finally, and I'm going to be on track to give you guys, when I send in packets, I will send in financials for the prior month. So that's my goal for the new year. There's some information in there. ODOT, not the folks that we talked to this evening, but the maintenance folks, there's going to be some work started on the bridge. And is that starting this month or next month?
They just started staging today.
Okay. And that's going to be going on for a while. I put the press release and the info from them in there, that you can read it. There will be some night work where there's going to be one-lane closures, but they're going to try to do it at night when there's not as much traffic. And then, of course, the bench dedication for Mayor Popoff. And I put a couple of photos in there that Main Street gave to me. And I also wanted to thank Counselor Kaufman, because she is the one that spearheaded that, and then Gold Beach Main Street for getting all that done. So that's all I have.
I do have one question, and it is something that's been bugging me for a long time now. And I was hoping, but I keep on forgetting to ask you about it. And we've got that nice, beautiful new sign in front on 101, declaring, of course, that we have a visitor center. Yet I have missed that, I don't know. It is something low. Is there any way that we can elevate that to a point where you can actually see it? I mean, maybe it's just me, but it seems low to me.
I'm just laughing because there's argument about monument signs. And that's what it is. And I get that same old thing. It's like, people can't see them if they're not up there.
You ever getting that, too?
No, I haven't heard about that one. But the argument is that you can't see a monument sign, but most people want monument signs to make the city pretty.
Yeah, well, this particular one, because it actually says where the, you know, it denotes the location of our visitor center. And yet, the sign sits down there like a little midget. And it's a beautiful sign, but it looks like a little midget. And the other thing, too...
I will take that under advisement, Mr. Fisher.
Well, the other thing, too, ma'am, is that, do we have any sign, and I haven't seen one at all, that states that there is turnaround at the back of the hill for those great big RVs? I'm not sure if we're missing any of those because they're afraid, not being able to see down below, that they have room to actually turn around and come back up the hill. I'm just curious about that.
And this is probably not a discussion for nine o'clock on a council meeting, but I have pretty strong opinions about signs and their usefulness, and whether people utilize them correctly or not. So, no, we probably were not, are not going to have an RV turnaround sign because, just because it doesn't matter how many signs get put out, there's always people that don't read them or see them.
Oh, yeah, well, there's always the 10%. And I happen to be part of that 10% on more than one occasion.
Yeah. In fact, I, one thing that is an irritation to me was years ago, at a meeting, it was a tourism meeting, we were talking about visitor center, and it was a local who had lived here for a very long time, was like, "We don't have a visitor center." And I'm like, "Well, actually, we do." And they're like, "Where?" And I said, "Well, it's, you know, down there, there's a big sign." And that was when we had the tall sign. I've never seen that. And I said, "Well, where do you live?" I mean, because I thought maybe they didn't live on that end of town. They lived in Hunter Creek. So they just drove past it every day. So...
Mine wasn't a big sign.
I still like to see it rose a little bit, but I haven't been able to see it.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll talk to the sign people.
I personally complained, actually, but it was from quite a good complainer, so I didn't...
What was that?
I didn't watch it.
Somebody was complaining about what?
Same thing.
Oh, the sign being low? Oh.
It's just like, and they can't see the Veterans Memorial. It's like, I don't know how to make that any more visible.
I don't either.
Without planting it right in 101.
Yeah, and with that, they'd get it.
Yeah.
All right. Moving right along. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Yep.
Okay, now, here's Counsel, a member of comments, and Counselor Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
You're joking, right?
Okay. So I went to the municipal fundamentals meeting.
Thank you.
Last month, it felt great. See some people that were...
That's right, you went, when I was supposed to go as well, too. How did that turn out?
Good.
I'm glad you had the opportunity to go, because LSC has really great training.
And I couldn't, as it turned out, I could not, so...
It was pretty similar, and I think, what, Aljibiyaga? But it was, I, what else do I have going on? That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel Brennan.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell, for my nomination. You're wonderful.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Pagano?
The World Jet Boat Races are coming back to Gold Beach this year. I don't know if anybody knew about that.
I did know.
But they'll be ending in Gold Beach this year. They're doing very nice.
What day?
Starts May 15th through the 24th. I don't know what day they race here. But they end here, so whoever breaks down prior, they'll get nights before they end here, so.
All right. Well, thank you, sir.
So is there a local contact with that, so that we can get him on the visitor center stuff? Do you know? I mean, Tim, you...
Of course, working with Ruth George on that, and Tim Harding.
Tim Harding and Michael. Yeah. He's on Fire Department, so.
Good for you.
Yeah, so that's exciting.
That is great. I was really, I was bummed when that went away years ago, because that was a really quality event.
Yeah, well, that smells of people, and...
Yep.
Yes, thank you, sir. Counsel Campbell?
I wanted to talk a little bit about the events center quickly. Several new board members have been seated by the Board of Commissioners, and the momentum's really building. Things are starting to happen down there. I'm getting even more excited than I was about the improvements that are going on down there. The board has not made a formal request, but I see it coming for next month, that they are asking for not to exceed $5,000 for the purchase of a stove, microwave, dishwasher, and bathroom fan for the, it's called the 4-H dorms, but they have housing down there, a little dorm room. Currently, they rent that out to employees of the Forest Service, the Park Department, and the Kouskuri Fire. And their microwave blew up, and only one burner on the stove is working. So it's negatively impacting their ability to continue to rent out that dorm. The flip side of that coin is, the resolution that we wrote says that we're not supposed to allocate money until they present their capital improvement plan to us as the city council, and that has not been done yet. I can say that they've hired Co-Play to update the master plan, and the strategic plan has been updated and is posted on their website. Both those components have to be in place, or it's recommended that those components are in place before they start working on the master plan, or, excuse me, the capital improvement plan. So they're not in complete compliance for release of the $5,000, but they've been diligently working towards it for the past two years, trying to get the strategic plan and these other plans up to date so that they can work on the capital improvement plan, if that makes sense. They're moving in the right direction, but they don't have that plan done yet, yet they want it back. So just think about that and procreate with that, and we'll talk about it next meeting. If you would put that on the agenda, please, ma'am.
Back to you, ma'am. Counsel Campbell?
I have a question for Counsel Campbell. Did they ever get their time on the Dusha Suite?
No, but we are in, what they did do was, at the last meeting, they decided to go with Dire out of Kous Bay to administer and facilitate the bid process and to manage the construction of the roof. Currently, they've set aside the entire month of August for the re-roof. They have that blocked out, and are not renting out Dusha Suite for the month of August in anticipation of having that contract go out to bid and having the new roof on. So that will be the first major expenditure of the TLT funds. And per our agreement, our resolution on that, you need to have a public ceremony to hand them off the money for the roof, and it'll be pomp and circumstance fun thing.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for all your effort on that.
Yeah, Summer's been instrumental, too. She's helped a lot in that.
No, no, that's super. Thank you. Counsel Kaufman, do you have anything more, ma'am?
I just have another follow-up question, but for the interior. Did they have any communication with you at all?
They have been communicating through Counselor Campbell as liaison. And then I have been communicating directly with the engineering, the engineer that was hired to do the assessment and then come up with the proposed plan, and now they're at the point where they're ready to bid it. So, yes and no.
Okay. Thank you. Not for much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
It's ironic that this came up tonight, because I actually was planning on mentioning that maybe it's time to give up and reallocate the, not the current funds, but future funds and future budgets to our visitor center structure. But that might be a premature discussion. The second thing I wanted to mention is I did not make the small district meeting. My back was sore that day. I don't know if anybody else made it, and if they could update us. And the housing task force is facilitated by Brock Fosher. And apparently, the funding for his position has been, it fell through, the grant fell through, so he won't be able to help us much longer. It kind of bums me out, because I know just the moment he got on board, things moved pretty quickly. And sometimes you need that catalyst that's independent of all of our own pet projects. projects. When we're all together, we all have a project we like better than the rest, and he seems to be able to hurt us in the right direction. So hopefully we can think of a way to fix that. Do you agree with that assessment?
Yeah.
And that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Real quickly, I know that we're getting late, I'm not going to belabor it much, but I was very saddened yesterday to learn that a very longtime member of this community passed away unexpectedly. I don't know if any of you, Daryl Allen, I think, he died the day after Christmas. Anyway, his wife, I worked with her, is juvenile for one.
Okay, I was going to say, which Allen was it, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I was very sad to hear that, and I do want to wish my, give my condolences to Sally and the children. So at any rate, it's just a sad, sad part of, sad part of life, but it happens. So at any rate, we are meeting, for those that don't know, at the beginning of the month, the first Monday of the month, and the fourth and the second, we've been doing that for the last three months, I believe, now. The next regular scheduled city council meeting is Monday, February 3rd, and it is at 6:30, and it is right here. So with that in mind, I would like to, first of all, ask if there's anybody that wants to say anything prior to us. We have this at the end of the meeting as well, to Citizens Comments, we want to make sure that if anybody has anything to say, that they will be heard. If not, then I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion been made, Counsel Campbell, a second, and I'm not going to worry about discussion, question?
Aye.
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 Oh. Here it is.